I'd like to call the August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, uh, school board meeting to order. Mrs. Hutchinson, can you please call the roll?
Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Mr. Hanlon, will you lead us in the pledge? Our first order of business is to approve to open the public hearing on the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two budget. I need a motion and a second to open the public hearing.
Moved.
Uh, moved by Mr. Hanlon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Yes. Uh, do we have anybody signed up for the public comment on the hearing for the budget? Okay, we do not. So I need, um, an approval to close the public hearing on the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two budget. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Um, moved by Mrs. Booton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanlon. Mrs. Hutchinson, can you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Seeing there are no modifications, I do have a statement I would like to read tonight. A lot has happened since we met five weeks ago as a community, and we still struggle with that this pandemic has entered a third school year. But it's important to celebrate. We are in person for all students this year. Because last year at this time, we had to pivot for grades six through twelve and go to virtual. Pivot is a word I hope we never have to use again. Every day through news and social media posts, we are reminded of the areas people in this country and room disagree with. But what is missing is we do not talk enough about the common areas we all agree on. All the parents in this room care about their children and care about children in general. We also find common consensus in that most children learn best when they are physically in school. When division occurs, listening stops, empathy stops, collaboration stops. Our students need and deserve us listening, empathizing, and collaborating on their behalf. So where do we begin? We start with the here and now. Everyone tonight needs to feel safe physically and emotionally in this room and comfortable speaking tonight if they choose. For that reason, tonight, we have brought in additional staff to monitor this expectation and address behavior that does not represent the expectations we have for visitors through Board Policy eight point three oh. In addition, face coverings are required throughout the duration of the meeting per Board Policy four point one eight two and the executive order that is in place for schools. While you may not agree with the person next to you or the person speaking at the podium, please recognize we have respectful, we can have respectful disagreement. We do not know the experiences that have led people to where they stand today. But we do know that each one of us has experienced loss in this last sixteen months, which may include loss of loved ones, relationships, jobs, homes. The list is endless. Finally, collaboration. This community has the power to pull together on behalf of students. We can make a choice to continue to divide, or we can find common ground to move forward. We are so much more than being defined by sides. Helen Keller once said, "Alone, we can do so little. Together, we can do so much." Ask yourself tonight before you judge the person sitting next to you, across from you, or facing you. Instead, ask how can we work together to be part of the solution? Dr. Schuler, do you have, um, a report that you'd like to give?
Just a, a couple of, uh, uh, quick updates for the board. As the board well knows, we started, uh, meetings with our new teachers on Monday of this week. We welcomed, uh, about a hundred and fifty staff members to the district. Uh, had a great opportunity to, uh, to spend some time, uh, getting them oriented. Tomorrow, we welcome all of our staff back, uh, to our schools for our first, uh, institute day of the district again, uh, as we prepare. And we're extremely excited, uh, about the fact that our school year starts on Monday. Um, certainly, uh, it is a beginning of the school year we've eagerly anticipated and we very much, uh, look forward to. Um, I, I had just a, a kind of a quick recap that I wanted to share with, uh, with both the board and the community as, uh, we prepare for, uh, both the start of school and, and the limited discussion that we're gonna have tonight uh, on the reopening discussions. And so, um, just the, the recap starts with the fact that we are seventeen months into this journey of educating students in a pandemic. With each path passing month, we learn more, we adjust plans, and we move forward toward what I believe has been a shared goal of getting students back in school full-time without interruption. The two thousand and twenty-one school year saw school districts take, take many different paths with different plans and schedules. I'm proud of the work that District Two Hundred did. Many of the communications we've received through this summer, regardless of viewpoint on the current situation, recognize the work that District Two Hundred did last year. Yet we did see students and staff miss days of school and thus instruction and opportunities. As we brought closure to last year, our top priority for this school year has been to avoid this loss of instruction, school activities, and all that comes with that experience. I recognize in District Two Hundred, we're educators, not medical professionals. Throughout the journey, we've sought the advice of others and communicated the importance of following guidance from Departments of Public Health. We recognize that that guidance has changed multiple times, even this summer after our initial board discussion. At the time of the last board meeting in July, the guidance said schools should use a number of layered mitigations based on local COVID data and vaccination data. And at the time, the DuPage County Health Department affirmed that guidance from CDC and communicated that they were not gonna provide specific recommendations on school reopening. We have continued to look carefully at the data and utilize the tools that helped the district inform decisions when that control west rested with our local teams. As it was last year, plans and recommendations were fluid. Local metrics continue to be monitored on a daily and weekly basis. Following the July board meeting, guidance was adjusted. Groups like the American Academy of Pediatrics, CDC, IDPH, and DuPage County Health Department issued new recommendations around universal masking, COVID case data has been on the rise, and the same tools that we used to support and guide decisions on July fourteenth would tell a very different story as we look at that today. We are in a different place, however, as we look to the two thousand and twenty-two school year. We're in a different place than we were last year. Students have the opportunity to be in school full-time with opportunities like recess, lunch specials, and classroom activity. We're actively working on processes to ensure appropriate mask breaks throughout the day and opportunities for teachers to use instructional practice that allow for the recognition of facial expression and movement in the instructional settings where it's most important. We'll continue to balance the need for safety and mitigation with instructional opportunities that are most important to our students. As we did last year, we continue to track our data and adjust practices accordingly. As the school year starts, we need to continue to review our local COVID nineteen data points. Doing so will allow us to advocate for appropriate levels of local control in decisions and be prepared when that opportunity does come to make data-informed decisions for our community. We recognize the opportunity to build capacity at the local level, both with local experts in the medical community and parents to guide understanding of the decisions that we make. Earlier last week, we communicated a back-to-school document. It outlined our plans and mitigations for the upcoming year. Universal masking is part of that expectation. We've continued to receive communication on all sides of that decision, including calls to ignore that executive order. That's not an option I'd consider recommending to the board, and universal masking is a part of our plan as we start the school year. Our expectations are outlined in Board Policy four point one eight two along with the consequences for violating that policy. It's simply not an option not to wear a mask. We teach our students to work through challenges in multiple ways and problem-solve when they disagree. We don't teach them that they can pick and choose which rules to follow or which to ignore if they don't like them. Our goal right now is to focus on the start of the school year and the opportunity in front of us to welcome our students back to schools on a regular schedule with many of the opportunities that we've missed. A focus on anything else in the immediate is a distraction. We look forward to seeing our students and teachers back in our building for full school days, music, sporting events, drama productions, recess, lunchtime, social opportunities that support the development of critical SEL skills for our students. Our students showed us last year that they can do it. Time and time again, they've stepped up to the expectations that have been set for them, and I'm confident in their ability to do that again. We look forward to the start of our school year on Monday and look forward to offering the board an update on a few specific areas, uh, as we get later into the agenda. That's all I have.
Okay, we're up to our public comments. In order, in accordance with Board Policy two point two three oh, members of the public wishing to offer public comment have the opportunity to do so. A public comment sign-up sheet was made available until seven PM at the meeting site tonight. Board meetings are available for viewing via live stream on the district's YouTube channel. As with all comments, please be aware that it is the board's regular practice to not directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comments until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The board is there to listen. Lack of action or direct response following public comments does not imply any lack of interest in what is being shared. Per Board Policy two point two three oh, the time allotted for each person to speak during public comment may be shortened to two minutes to provide the maximum number of people an opportunity to speak. We will be doing that tonight. To preserve confidentiality, the board and its president request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session if necessary. The board must prevent, protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your public comment. Please include your name and whether you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to two minutes. Mr. Hanlon will time the comments, raise his hand and, and let you know that the two minute, you've reached the two-minute mark. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condensating, condescending to members of the board and staff. I'm gonna read two names. The first one is the one that will come up to speak. The next one will be ready to go so that we can get through and get through as many of these as we can. Michelle Graham and Jessica Banasek is up second.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Schuler, and stakeholders present and watching this meeting. I am the mom of three amazing CUSD two hundred students, and I am concerned about schools opening. I know the jobs of the superintendent, board members, and administration are more difficult than usual, and you are trying to make the best decisions with the students and staff health in mind. Oh, yeah, no problem. Thank you. But I have to respectfully disagree with your decision at the July board meeting to make masks optional for all. Now, I'm fully aware the governor has mandated masks be worn in schools. But I worry about the mask mandate being lifted before a vaccine is available for all of our youngest community members. In schools, we have protocols and safety measures in place to prevent students from dying from anaphylactic shock related to peanuts and other allergies. So I thought the district would take the same precautions with our elementary students to prevent them from harmful effects of COVID nineteen, which unfortunately has taken the lives of children and left long-lasting effects. If the governor's mandate is lifted before a vaccine is available for children under twelve, we must continue to make masks mandatory, mandatory for our elementary students at least. It was stated at the last board meeting that it would be difficult to police who is vaccinated and who is not. But in my opinion, it would be easy to monitor at the elementary level since the vaccine is not available with them yet. I know I cannot be the only one who has seen media posts of some community members acting selfish and careless as they ignore mitigation measures and encourage others to wear mesh masks or blow bubbles in groups on the way to school. Such selfish acts will increase our numbers as seen on the DuPage County Health Department's dashboard that reported one hundred and twenty-four new cases for the week of August eighth through the fourteenth, the highest weekly case count since April of this year. COVID has proven to be deadly or have long-lasting effects for people of all ages. So I hope Dr. Schuler and the board do address these behaviors of those who we have witnessed tonight are selfishly trying to find loopholes around masks or maybe trying to engage behaviors on and around school property that put students at risk.
Thank you.
Jessica Banasek up after her. Jessica would be Ron McGowan.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me come up and address the board. Uh, my name is Jessica Banasek, and I have a student in transition, and I have a student at Wheaton-Wormville South. Um, to make this brief, I, I have a theme from my comment, and it's do better. Um, I urge the board to urge our district to do better in their communication and collaboration with the DuPage County Health Department regarding any and all COVID nineteen mitigation adjustments. Full transparency is crucial, and we must always, always align with our public health partners. Secondly, I urge the board to implore our s- school leaders to do better. We need better optics for mask-wearing. Um, clear signage should be in every school to both remind and reinforce. Um, we need a mask attestation to be added to the parent-student handbook that, um, is signed by every family every year, and it must list expectations and consequences of not wearing a mask. These effects, um, these efforts simply will not work if we These effects, these efforts simply will not work if we are not consistent and if there are gaps. We all are in this together, and we need to work together. And let me tell you, just from the first 20 minutes of this meeting, seeing the amount of defiance from some of these parents, I fear for what our schools will look like when they start next week. So I hope that there is a plan in place for this. Third, I urge our board to look into the transition situation. Currently, there is a proposal for the grounds crew to annex two-thirds of a large classroom at transition to make a break area. This will negatively impact the transition students because it will be taking away space that is currently used for physical activity and therapy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ron McGowan, and then Ronak Misuria.
Hi, I'm Ron, a District 200 resident and a father of three, and a spiritual father to many more. I'm concerned. I'm concerned that it took an executive order for you to prioritize 77% of our students who are unvaccinated. This decision erodes communal trust. How can we trust you to make complicated decisions if we can't trust you to make simple, clear decisions? If we can't trust you to read and understand, implement clear guidelines from national, state, and local medical professionals, how can we trust you to read, comprehend, and discern complex issues like critical race theory and culturally responsive teaching? They may share the same acronym, but they are nothing alike. One is a legal movement that explores how US laws based on race have affected social realities. The other is a teaching practice which connects students' cultures, languages, and experiences with what they learn in class. So I recommend three things. One, establish, publish, and adhere to a clear mitigation strategy based on COVID transmission levels so that we, parents, staff, students, know what to expect when the executive order expires. Remember, a parent's choice does not extend to harming a neighbor. Two, set and enforce clear guidelines and consequences for student and parents disregarding indoor masking. Three, it grieves me to say this, but begin now looking for our next superintendent. Over the past 18 months, Dr. Schuler has showed that he cannot lead us to where we need to go. His contract expires on June 30th, 2022. I look forward to hearing from you about who our next superintendent might be to lead us into the future where we need to go. Thank you.
Next up is Ronak Misuria, and then Brian Campen.
Thank you. I am a parent of an incoming first grader in this district. I was appalled and disgusted by this district's decision to make masks optional for all, including elementary school students for whom there was no vaccine. The guidance at the time, and still, called for all unvaccinated individuals to be masked indoors. I am extremely disappointed that it took weeks of parents holding rallies, doing news interviews, and mounting phone and email campaigns, ending with the governor's mandate in order for this district to be forced into implementing basic safety protocols. This administration's cavalier attitude about COVID is present in its lunch plans. At Wheeze Brook, the lunch plan is to gather about 180 unmasked and unvaccinated children in the gym three feet apart for 30 minutes every day. It is undisputed that lunch will be one of the riskiest times of the day. It is also undisputed that the safest thing here to do is to implement outdoor lunches while weather permits and classroom lunches while it does not. This idea has been met with weak rebuttals by administration regarding difficulty supervising children and budgetary concerns. Why will this administration not do better when it can, particularly when it receives federal funding to do just that? Why does it not want to use every tool at its disposal to help keep children safe? I urge you to take this seriously and implement a safe lunch plan. Put lives before dollars. That Superintendent Schuler catered to a radical agenda of opposing COVID safety measures, something that has since been identified as domestic terror threat by the Department of Homeland Security, will forever be a stain on this district's reputation. I cannot emphasize enough the damage done to this administration's credibility, relationships, trust, and integrity as a result of having a superintendent who made science and public health a matter of personal freedom. This latest debacle has demonstrated that Superintendent Schuler lacks the judgment to lead and the humility to listen, the arrogance present in his decision to take a gamble with children's lives by research, and his interpretation of an MIT statistical model real data and public health experts speaks about his lack of fitness for
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Brian Campen, and after that, Shannon Lumjuko.
Hi, good evening. My name is Brian Campen, and I'm a District 200 parent, and I live in Wheaton. I'm a father of two. My son is 13 and my daughter is eight. I'm here to tell you that we need leadership because leadership requires, demands, especially in a time like this, the ability to think ahead, and it starts with new leadership. That said, I have two questions. What is our outdoor lunch plan to prevent an outbreak, especially among unvaccinated grade schoolers? And when is this body going to assist on masking in schools? Is it Monday? Because I'm sincerely telling you, it did not happen yesterday when I visited a local middle school with my son. We went to our District 200 school yesterday, and I saw maybe 20 students wandering crowded hallways unmasked, and that was stunning to me. Sincerely, what is this body doing that is higher priority than ensuring every child is safe? The horrifying reality is that unvaccinated, unmasked kids are going to taste the worst of it this fall. And you know the mandate, you know it cold by now, so enforce it. Honor the fact that a lot of parents had to take time off of work and vacation the past month and get a mandate passed because this body wouldn't or couldn't ensure masking during a pandemic. Leadership begins and ends with a superintendent, and we need a new one. Why? Consider a few issues of past year. The district's idea for a public discussion of the pandemic last fall was to platform a candidate running for national office who denies COVID is an issue and is now talking about unmasking the kids. This district's idea July 14th was to propose masking optional for all of our unvaccinated kids, just as Delta was beginning to take hold. Local unmasking advocates thought that was a very good idea and said so. The unmasking proposal, or masking optional proposal, was the best idea they had seen from a superintendent so far, is what was said in a mass email sent out in the last couple of weeks. The grade school lunch plan packs unmasked, unvaccinated grade schoolers into lunchrooms and currently does not even allow unvaccinated children's classes to eat outside.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Shannon Lumjuko, and then Sean McCumber.
Good evening, my name is Shannon Lumjuko. I'm the parent of two elementary school students in the district. I'm also a public health professional, and that is why I feel compelled to speak on this topic. I do hold a master's degree in public health. I have prior experience in infectious disease emergency planning and response, and my current professional role coordinate education related to COVID and pediatrics. My comments tonight focus on the shared goal which you stated before, which is keeping our schools open this year. I am relieved to know that our schools will be requiring masks. I do question whether we're doing enough around other mitigation strategies. First, every environment in the school setting should be working toward the same goal of mitigating transmission. This means thinking critically and creatively about spaces like lunchrooms and hallways and buses. I do have concerns about putting several grades worth of elementary school students in a cafeteria or gym to eat lunch, knowing that this variant is extremely contagious, it aerosolizes, and it can linger in the air for hours. Outdoor lunch would be best. Cohorting in classrooms would be the next best choice. Second, I am encouraged that our schools will offer surveillance testing for COVID. What is less encouraging is that this was just a message to parents last Friday, and we were given only two days to opt in and no explanation about the benefits to participating. I do hope that our district will do better on communicating with parents about this in the future. Like many in this room, I am concerned about our children's mental health. The closure of our schools due to unmitigated spread of COVID would be devastating to our kids academically, mentally, and emotionally. Overall, I urge partnership with local public health and creative thinking about COVID mitigation measures. We cannot simply be reactive. 18 months into the pandemic, we need to apply what has been learned by public health experts and proactively anticipate scenarios that we know will quickly change. As Dr. Schuler said earlier, plans are fluid, we know things will change. I urge our school district to be a leader here and give our kids the best chance at staying in school this year. Thank you.
Next up is Sean McCumber, and then Justin Khan.
Good evening, board, Dr. Schuler, teachers, staff, and parents in our community. My name is Sean McCumber. I was a D-200 student, and I am a D-200 parent. I'm a lifelong resident of this area, and I stand in support of the mask requirements to get our students back in-person learning. For over 18 months, we've encountered a pandemic that has turned our world upside down. It has drained us. It has changed us. We have become a nation of sides, nothing more evident than some of the speakers and people I've seen here tonight. I do not always agree with everyone, and oftentimes, not everyone agrees with me. However, the fact that a small piece of fabric has created armchair epidemiologists and kitchen constitutionalists pitting neighbors against one another dismayed me greatly. Throughout our history, small pieces of fabric have been the glue binding so many different opinions together, and now they tear us apart. I applaud the monumental efforts made to bring our students back to in-person learning and back to extracurriculars and more. I know that not everyone agrees with how we are returning. I wish we could have achieved something to everyone's liking. Unfortunately, we cannot. If a mask is the biggest sacrifice I am asked to make for the good of others, I will wear it proudly. I leave you with the words of President Harry Truman. "America was not built on fear. America was built on courage, on imagination, and an unbeatable determination to do the job at hand. Let's do the job at hand." Thank you.
Next up is Justin Khan, and then Jenna Tattinall.
Hello, District 200 Board. Unlike those preceding me, I don't have anything prepared, but I will keep this short. I am concerned about the masks and the lunch issues. I am very glad that we have the mask mandate, and all those who preceded me have already spoken very well about this.
In regards to the lunch, though, we have been told a plan. We have seen no illustrations. We have seen no pictures, and we will be starting school on Monday. So even if I were to go tomorrow to the meet-the-teacher thing and see the schoolroom as it's set up, the cafeteria with the spacing, even if I deem it not adequate, what time do we have to come up with another plan? It would have been better if this could have been addressed earlier, if we could see pictures sent out on an email or anything like that, because we have no way of addressing this or coming up with some kind of compromise regarding this. So I would appreciate if we could do something in regards to the lunch spacing and also maybe staggered lunches. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Jenna Tattinall, and after that, Brian McCullough.
Good evening. Due to the governor's mask mandate, my three unable-to-be-vaccinated children will be returning to school with the most effective COVID, available COVID mitigation in place. After over a year of virtual learning, they are excited to return to District 200 classrooms. However, when the decision was left up to this administration, this simple, effective measure was rejected. At that time, the clear guidance of the CDC, the IDPH, the AAP, the DCHD was ignored, and optionality was read into their language. At that time, we all knew that Delta cases were on the rise. We knew what the guidance was. I ask of the decision-makers in this room elected and appointed, when this public health decision returns to you, listen to the experts. As educational leaders, please value the learning of epidemiologists, no matter how they've been politicized. Model to our students respect for expertise. Work with the DuPage County Health Department instead of interpreting data by yourselves with your own tool. Hear their intent. Our district's reputation and community trust was harmed by this administration's continued justification of the mask policy. One assistant superintendent told concerned parents in phone calls this summer that kids were going to get COVID anyway, from lunch or from unmasked playdates. That uncaring message is unacceptable from the leadership of a reputable district that claims to value student safety. We all want kids back in school and for them to stay in school. This fall, masks are going to make that happen. Board, in your future decisions, do not give up on the health and safety of our children and our community. Do not be pressed into responding to a divisive and ill-formed agenda on masking, on diversity, or on anything else that these political groups push. I ask that you review your process and review your primary employee over this issue. Verify that he is actually working with the DuPage County Health Department in the ways that he's required. Thank you for your service.
Next up is Brian McCullough, and then Matt Adams.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Schuler and board. My name is Brian McCullough. I'm a father of two students in District 200. I'm going to talk a bit about liability and safety. If the district chooses to violate our rights and mandate the wearing of masks, please have your insurance company provide the families of all students a written assumption of liability stating that they accept the responsibility and liability associated with mandating the use of an unapproved medical device against the guidance of the FDA and the manufacturer. I'm going to tell a little story about what masks do to kids. This past spring, I got a call from the vice principal at my son's middle school, and he said, "Your son's missing." My son's missing? I said, "My son's missing?" He said, "Yeah, I think we need to call the police." I said, "What do you mean, my son's missing?" "Well, we can't find him." And I thought, "How the hell do you lose a middle-aged or a 13-year-old student out of middle school?" We called the police. We tracked him down, and he was at his mother's home. We got there with the police and the assistant vice principal, and the kid was in tears. He had left school after a debate that just went wrong. All the pressures of the masks, all the pressures of school got to him. And I took him to Central DuPage Hospital, and when I took him there, they confirmed that he was suicidal. That is what masks are doing to our children. When I was at Central DuPage with my son and his mother, I talked to the nurse there, and the nurse said, "You know what? Unfortunately, this is all too common. There's six other families in here with kids that are your son's age, all with the same suicidal problem." And at that moment, I realized
Thank you very much. Sir, thank you very much. Thank you.
Next up is Matt Adams, and then Kathleen Murphy.
Dr. Schuler and the board, my name is Matt Adams. I have three daughters in this school district, and I'm really fortunate that none of them were in the 290 children and teenagers who have been hospitalized with COVID in DuPage County. And I don't want our local health decisions to be coming out of Washington or out of Springfield or kind of mirrored off of Cook County, because we're at DuPage County. We have the DuPage County Health Department here that gives sound recommendations. And Dr. Schuler, you and other superintendents regularly meet with them, and you come up with a little bit of sausage-making where you have to kind of compromise to make sure that you can adhere to their plans. But what's really important is that this board and this superintendent, you're going to continue to have these public health conversations until there's some unwavering uniformity of just following the recommendations of the DuPage County Health Department every single time into the letter. And the reason that I'm here is that it has nothing really to do with the optional mask mandate. It has to do with ignoring local public health advice and going against the opposite of that advice. So as the board, it's not your job to try to figure out exactly what public health people are trying to recommend. It's to be asking the superintendent, "Does your plan follow the recommendations of the local health department?" And if he says they do, then your vote's very obvious. Sure, you can go ahead with the plan. And as things change, that has to be the question you're asking every single time. And if you don't do this, and if we're going to have rooms of very impassioned individuals who are going to be talking about the individual desires they want regarding public health. And the goal of public health is not just to be protecting the individuals, it's to be protecting the most vulnerable in this community, many of whom wouldn't be able to attend a large gathering like this and speak out. And that's why so many of us are here doing that. Thank you.
Next up is Kathleen Murphy. After Kathleen is Jill Caballero.
Hi. I'd like to start by actually thanking the board for facilitating a discussion in this community that incorporated all points of view and looked at local data and making a decision that reflected the values and the wishes of people in this community, along with with the local data that was available at that time. It was a really reasonable decision. I'm disappointed and upset that the governor decided to overrule any district's decision and put his own mandate down on, especially when it won't be effective unless he closes off the state from anyone coming into the state. You're just not going to contain COVID transmission that way. There is very little consistent data from epidemiologists. There are epidemiologists like Martin Kulldorff, Marty McCary, Roger Klein, John Lohndes, Sunatra Gupta, Robert Malone, Jay Bhattacharya, eleven out of fourteen random controlled trial studies on surgical and cloth masks. Oh, that masks really are not effective in controlling the COVID transmission rates. So there is a lot of data to sort through that's coming from a lot of different directions. You looked at local data, you met with local people, you're to be commended for that. Wheaton is a gem of a community. District 200 is a leader in the state, and I would encourage you to continue to try and make decisions as locally as possible. It's upsetting that Governor Pritzker came in and destroyed that, and it's concerning to me, that is concerning to me. And I met with you, Dr. Schuler, and asked you to invite him to come and talk to these parents. If he's going to make decisions for this community, this is an educated community. You had a discussion that involved every perspective.
Thank you very much.
And so I would just ask you to continue to approach things in that manner.
Next up is Jill Caballero and then Dan Nebraska.
My name is Jill. I'm a mom of two children under the age of twelve in District 200. Last year, we chose Virtual Academy as the best option for our children, and I'm thankful that we had that option. This year, our children will be attending in person. I was shocked to learn that at the July 14th board meeting, in the midst of an ongoing worldwide pandemic, with no option for vaccination of those under twelve and an increase of concentration of children in each of our schools in our district, that our superintendent would choose to lift the most simple and effective mitigation, creating substantially safer learning environment for our children: universal masking. I'm thankful for the governor's mask mandate and the Illinois State Board of Education's efforts to enforce that mandate. And I hope that going forward, we will follow the recommendations of the experts of the Illinois State Board of Education, the CDC, the DCHD, the AAP, without need of a mandate. I hope that our superintendent will act in the best interest of our entire community and will ensure that our schools are a safe environment for all of our students. I expect the board and the superintendent to mandate masks until all students have had the opportunity to be fully vaccinated and experts agree it is safe to remove this mitigation, and not any time before. I know this has been a difficult year for all of us, and especially for those of you that have had the responsibility of leading through this unprecedented time. However, if our leadership, if our superintendent chooses an interpretation of recommendations that endangers the safety of our children, I expect the board to hold him accountable and look for someone that is more suitable. Thank you very much.
Don Nebraska and then Amy Kipfer.
Thank you again for your courage. Sorry. Thank you again for your courage to make the decision and the accommodations needed to have our children return to school last year as well as this year, when most school districts in the surrounding area were not doing so. I also want to thank you for the decision you made at the last board meeting on July 14th to remove the mask mandate for our children and the staff. It's unfortunate that our governor is continuing to abuse the emergency powers he has by maintaining that we are still in a state of emergency. And since he is doing that basically without being challenged, he is now usurping the local control of education. My concern as a parent is that the targets or the thresholds for the rules that affect our children keep changing. Do you all remember when this all began and the government told us millions of citizens were going to be dying from COVID? Our governor told us that if we had to close down the state, and if we didn't, we'd overwhelm the hospital system. To be prepared for this emergency that was coming, they converted the old vacant Sherman Hospital in Elgin into an overflow coronavirus care facility. That overflow facility, which cost nineteen million dollars to convert, was never opened. You probably also heard about McCormick Place, which was converted into a COVID overflow, initially slated for three thousand beds, then scaled back to two thousand beds. After only thirty-eight total patients were admitted, they closed that facility. It's estimated that that facility cost eighty-one million dollars to convert. I was thankful at the time that the governor was preparing for the worst, but what did we actually see play out over the last year? According to IDPH vital statistics of causes of death, there were fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifteen COVID deaths in Illinois for 2020. So 0.001% of the population in Illinois died from COVID in 2020. To put that into perspective, heart disease was attributed to twenty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-six deaths in Illinois.
Thank you very much, sir. No, thank you very much. Sir, we're holding everybody to the same amount.
Heart disease has all been caused in the last decade, but we haven't caused that as a state of emergency.
Sir, we need to stop so we give everybody the same amount.
Can I speak for one more minute?
I'm sorry, you can't. We need to be able to give everybody the same amount of time.
Where you need to come in.
Amy Kipfer, please, and then Alicia O'Connell. I'm sorry, we're not doing that.
I had a three-minute message prepared, so I'm sorry.
Excuse me, sir. We posted with our agenda that we would be knocking it down to two minutes, so you need to be.
Please stand up for our kids now and do what's right based on what's actually happening around us, not what they're telling you on TV or what they're telling you from Springfield.
Amy Kipfer and then Alicia O'Connell.
Hello for the third board meeting in a row. I'm sorry that I am back again. I was very encouraged at July meeting that, should I wait? I was very encouraged of the July.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Crabtree, we're going to recess the meeting for a moment. We're not going to have this interaction out in the audience, so we're going to take a break. Your time has not gone. Just you can go back to your seat. We're going to take a little recess.
We'll be resuming in about 30 seconds. Ms. Kipfer will be up in a minute, but before we start again, I want to please ask for the decorum in here to be respectful. The speaker who is at the podium has the floor and we should not be having other conversation and that happening back and forth. Masks will be worn the entire time for the duration of the meeting. Ms. Kipfer is up. Jeanne Ives is after that. You can start again from your beginning.
Okay, thank you. All right. Good evening. July was encouraged that parents were allowed to do what we thought was best for our children when you were given the option of whether your child should go to school masked or no mask. I actually did not feel after the July meeting a big victory. I actually felt very saddened and discouraged because the only thing I really want is for children to go to school to have a positive, happy, learning environment. All of this is not any of that and our children feel it at school. I have an eight-year-old who will not be able to start school on Monday because she cannot wear a mask over her face. She physically and mentally cannot do it. We've tried. She came tonight. She couldn't even come into the building because it was required. So I'm letting, as though I'm here to speak up for the kids' mental health. We need to think about it. Out of all the children in DuPage County, not one child has died from COVID. Do you know how many suicides we've had? I looked at the website today. Eight. That is eight too many. Now, that doesn't account for the children who are trying to take their lives, who thank God, have not been successful. I personally know three who have tried. Three. That's too many for me to know. How many more are there? Then there's the fact that, yes, some of these parents want their children to wear masks. I understand that they're scared, but their child will never probably tell their parent how their mask makes them feel. I would have never gone home as a child and tried to tell my mom or my aunt and uncle, who I lived with at the time, that the mask was causing me problems.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Ives is up next and then Christine Tandy.
We need to stand up for the kids' health, mental health, too.
I'm Jeanne Ives. I've been a parent at Wheaton-Warnville South for 16 years. I've got my five children. I'm my last daughter, her senior year, and this has started out to be a disaster. I will tell you, the kids are smarter than you, much smarter than you, because they know you can't wrestle in a mask. They know that COVID, if you're going to be a dog pile on the football field, you're going to get COVID just as easily there. So they're looking at this and they're saying, oh, I can't wear a mask when I eat lunch, but I sure can wear, but I have to wear a mask at, when I sit at my desk. The kids understand what's going on. They're playing in everybody's basement without a mask and they look at you guys and they know that you're not serious about doing anything. On another note, let's talk about what you guys are doing with diversity, equity, inclusion. It's a joke. You literally hired somebody called Marcus Crum. He wrote a book, a letter, or an article wrote, "The Crisis in Black Education."
Ms. Ives, can you pull your mask back up, please?
"The Crisis in Black Education from a Post-White Orientation." Oh, really? Post-white orientation includes, according to him, anticipation of a post-white sociopolitical norm and demotion of white standing in position and status. You hired him? You hired him? The kids also know that this is a very diverse community that respects everybody. Maybe you guys don't. Maybe you guys have a problem, but out on the football field, on the wrestling mat, in the show choirs, or anywhere else, the kids respect each other and what you're teaching them is extremely harmful and unnecessary and you know it and you've been running the system for a very long time. And if you think you have a problem with race, then you don't even know your own kids.
Next up is Christine Tandy and following Christine is Steve Gross.
Hi, I'm Christine Tandy and I've been a D-200 parent for 13 years. Thank you for all that you do. I have three points. I would like to see more transparency in your decision-making process. I think you're doing yourself a disservice by not sharing more. People will fill in the gaps absent facts and knowledge. You have left many feeling your decision-making process is weak and prone to undue influence. I don't think it is. I know many of you. Prove me right. Second point, I support the mandate and CDC and local health department recommendations. I'll support science-driven decisions going forward, including a more nuanced approach to masking if and when that is appropriate. I would like to see D-200's default be Illinois and DuPage Health Department recommendations. It should be a high bar to pass to do something different and it can't be done behind closed doors. You have to explain any and all exceptions to us. Be humble. You are not experts. And please give our teachers the tools to support and follow through on mask policy. Final point to the community. At this point, I'm almost as worried about the toxic environment our kids are coming back to as I am about COVID. What happened to humbleness and love thy neighbor, community values, I used to think? I'm good at my job, but I would never presume to know how to fix my car, teach chemistry or perform surgery. Few of us are epidemiologists or public health experts. Why would anyone here presume to know more than what is recommended by the vast majority of studies and experts? Our kids are mirrors reflecting images of what happens around us. They act out on our stresses. For the majority of them, the face coverings are only bothersome as we tell them they are. We need to do better and you need our support for that. Thank you.
Next up is Steve Gross and then Cassandra Chambers.
Good evening, Board. I'm Steve Gross. I'm a parent of two students in the district. Over the past year, I have had three family members admitted to the hospital. Almost exactly a year ago, I spent the evening with my father in the emergency room. Several hours into our stay, the radio indicated a COVID-positive patient was on their way in. The energy in the emergency room changed. Nurses took off their usual masks and put on painting masks with ventilators. A hazmat suit was wheeled in, just in case. I personally made sure the glass door to my dad's room was closed completely and wondered what the heck I was doing there. My father passed away a few weeks later while still in medical care. He did not die of COVID, but I believe the overwhelmed hospital affected the type of care he received. A few months later, I brought my stepmother to the hospital after a fall. Due to COVID protocols, the breathing treatments she had gotten at home were restricted in the hospital. She passed away a few days later. She did not die of COVID, but I believe COVID affected the type of care she received. Just this past weekend, a family member of mine was admitted to the hospital. We had a 48-hour stay. This time, my family member survived, but the hospital is beginning to get overrun by COVID again. Wearing a mask all day long sucks. There are consequences, but it's our responsibility as Americans to do whatever we can for the brave men and women working in our hospitals and taking care of our sick patients. Our students under 12 cannot be vaccinated. The Delta variant can affect vaccinated and unvaccinated people. We need to do everything we can to help fight this virus and keep our children in school. Wearing a mask is a way to accomplish this. My grandmother graduated from Wheaton Public Schools about 100 years ago.
Thank you very much, sir.
Next up is Cassandra Chambers and then Bob Stozak.
Thank you for letting us speak tonight. My name's Cassandra Chambers. My daughter Maddie is going into Sandberg in the fourth grade this fall. First of all, I'd like to say that my name is on Maddie's birth certificate, not Governor Pritzker, not anybody on this board. I am her mother and I make the decisions on her well-being. This should be a parental choice. This is a mask that I had to wear to do mold remediation for 10 years. It has extra filters in it. It is OSHA-approved. We had to wear these because 250,000 mold spores fit on the head of a pin. Do you know the 100 million COVID droplets fit on the head of a pin? Paper masks weren't OSHA-approved because they don't work. These paper masks are doing nothing but keeping bacteria on our kids' face. If I had showed up in a paper mask on the job site, I would have got sent home. If I showed up in one of these homemade cloth masks, they would have laughed at me. These masks make no sense. While we are getting certified to wear these masks to do mold remediation, we learned a lot about bacteria. There's six million bacteria in your mouth. Bacteria growth is accelerated by moisture. How long does it take before these masks get moist on a kid's face? All we're doing is accelerating bacteria growth that is, we're keeping against their face all day long. This is ridiculous. Bacteria doubles every four to 20 minutes. So by keeping these masks on all day long, you're just letting bacteria grow on a piece of cloth up against their face. This is ridiculous. Again, also, I'd like to say that Maddie was in camp all summer, at Camp Illini through Wheaton Park District. They never wore a mask, not inside, not outside. They hugged each other when they got there in the morning. They hugged each other goodbye in the afternoon. They swam together. They never social-distanced, even on rainy days inside the Girl Scout cabin. And there was no COVID cases. Thank you.
Next up is Bob Stozak and then David Somer.
Good evening. I'm Bob Stozak. I've been in District 200 since 1975, so I've seen quite a few, quite a few things go on in education in the district. I'm seriously concerned about the state's Illinois, their onerous culturally responsive teaching standards, which promote things like critical race theory, gender identity ideologies, excuse me, as we made clear in that Senate Bill 818. They represent a gross overreach of their authority, in my opinion. Teaching content mandated in the bill like systemic racism, white privilege, oppressor-oppressed categorization, and gender fluidity are totally inappropriate concepts to be taught in our schools. I reviewed many of the relevant lessons and videos marketed as potential teaching material and I find them direct in direct conflict with the values and beliefs of many of the district's parents that I've talked to and some teachers as well. These materials are inherently racist, promote racial division, not racial harmony, and if implemented, will also result in decreased overall academic performance. National polls that I've studied demonstrate that between two-thirds and three-quarters of respondents do not want this kind of material taught in their schools. But perhaps most important, these state mandates usurp parents' rights to determine how, when, and where this kind of material is taught to their children. It's going to take some time to address these problems at the ballot box, so we need you, the District 200 School Board, who are elected by and accountable to your constituents, to help fix this. We need you to resist woke programs being offered like Deep Equity and some of the online materials like Amaze.com and similar products and for you to review with parents any such programs and materials that you may select to respond to the state mandates so parents can assess their appropriateness. You need to act on that now. Let parents exercise their appropriate role in teaching their kids about race and sex.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next up is David Somer and then Maddie Somer.
And focus your primary efforts on academic excellence.
David Somer and then Maddie Zmelden. I'm not quite sure.
Hello. My name is David Somer. I've been a resident of Wheaton for over 20 years. I've had five children go through Wheaton North High School. My sixth will be a senior this fall. I'm not going to speak tonight for or against mask-wearing. Tonight, I want to speak to you about freedom and liberty. Freedom to value liberty even over safety. Freedom to choose what medicines to put into your body. Freedom to assess the risks and decide what type of protection you need against a certain virus or illness. Freedom not to have someone demand that your young child wear a mask over their face in their formative years. I know at least a few of you claim faith in God, as I do. I'm reminded that the Bible says that you must submit to government authorities. In America, we, the people, are the government, not you. You are supposed to represent us. You can see what the people want: freedom. The recent death rate of Delta in the U.S. is on par with the normal year of the flu. Those are the CDC numbers as of very recently. You have a responsibility to push back on the authoritarianism coming down from Governor P.S., please reject critical race theory. It is a poisonous cancer and a new racism in our society. Thank you so much.
Next up is Maddie Zmelden and then Lilly Ives.
Hi, I am Maddie. I'm a fourth grader at Sandberg School and I don't wearing masks, I don't like wearing masks because they're hard to breathe in and I don't get to see my friends' smiles.
Hi, my name is Lilly Ives. I'm a fourth grader at Sandberg School this year and I don't like wearing masks because at PE it's really hard to breathe because you're moving around so much.
Thank you, ladies. Next up is Jo Sanders and then Jessica Hackett. Jo Sanders? No, I'm sorry, you cannot. You had to sign up. Jessica Hackett, after Jessica's Harold Longs.
I'm Jessica Hackett, a Wheaton resident. I have a PhD in educational psychology. I can't stand credentialism, but I think it's relevant because I've worked with hundreds of schools and been in thousands of classrooms. The forced covering of a child's face as a condition of in-person schooling is wrong. It's even more wrong when it's unlawfully dictated by a tyrannical governor who, motivated by politics, brazenly declares a public health emergency for schools, usurps the lawful authority of the local school board that has been established by the Illinois General Assembly and dictates what students wear to school. He doesn't have the authority to tell students what the dress code is. The legislative branch does. There's two statutes about it. You do because your dress code comes from those statutes, but he can't tell students what to wear to school. So you're going to have a problem pretty quickly when it comes to enforceability. And in fact, and this is, I say this in love, I'm trying to speak truth, but also be just reasonable, because your current policy about face coverings is outdated from last year. It's unenforceable. In fact, it's in conflict with things that you've said tonight. Your current policy says that people can remove their mask if they're having difficulty breathing. I'm having difficulty breathing right now, so I'm taking off my mask.
Please put your mask back on.
It says it in your policy. You need to change your policy. And if you want to enforce a dress code on kids, you better change your dress code policy. Change it, because you know why? In Illinois, we can make religious objections to dress code policies. Thank you.
Next is Harold Longs, followed by Kevin LaForge.
Good evening. Harold Longs, I'm a resident of District 200. My first item is regarding number 11 on your agenda about foreign travel liability insurance. Why is our district paying for travel insurance to a foreign country when we are under pandemic and traveling is limited? Tonight, it came to my attention that there are plans to send students to Spain. How can the administration allow this to happen in this environment? It doesn't matter if the insurance costs a dollar, $1,300, or $1,000, $10,000. Our district does not need this coverage. I know it's part of a cooperative insurance package, but the Board can remove item number 11 for the consent agenda and vote no, and vote no to approve this foolish spending. Please stand up for the taxpayers of the district. Secondly, it came to my attention that a elementary principal sent emails to parents stating that parents can no longer bring lunch to their child at lunchtime because of equity. Can someone from the administration and/or Board explain to the public why this new policy is allowed to exist? At the same time, at the same school last year, some teachers refused mask breaks for elementary students. These policies and protocols must be removed before school begins next week. Finally, over the past year and a half, the remote and hybrid schedules did not prepare our students well for college. Parents were told that the level instruction would be, will not be impacted by remote and hybrid classes, but that was not true. I can speak from experience. This week, one of my daughters could not test out of a college math course because the material was either not covered and/or the remote learning was not up to current standards. Thank you.
Next up is Kevin LaForge and then Rebecca Krishnamathie.
Hello, everyone. Hi. So I just have a few things I want to, I want to touch on. First question here for our Board is who governs us? We've been told what we have to do from on high. Now, I understand that's, we've already got a direction and this is the way we're going to do. But there's a very powerful word that each and every single one of us has here and that word is no. So the question to the Board here is, are we going to do what the state tells us to do when they tell us that two and two is five? Just need to keep that in mind for the future. Second thing, I want to address my friends of the community who still fear the disease. You can get a vaccine now to protect yourself and I ask for those who haven't and you want to carry that risk yourself, have you seen the face of immortality? A smile of a child is worth more to me than a few minutes, days, or even years of my own life. There's a big difference between staying alive and living. Memento mori.
Next up is Rebecca. After that is Liz Albert.
I have a child who is in a wheelchair because of a vaccine injury when he was two years old. We've had medical treatment for him for the past five years that involves thousands of thousands of dollars. We recently were turned away from our immunologist's office because my son is medically unable to wear a mask. His oxygen level goes below safe levels. If he was in the hospital, he would have to be on forced air at that number. My child, who has a speech delay, has been denied services to the school district because I cannot get a medical exemption for her. We have done everything that we can do to take care of our children and you, as the School Board, have decided that following a policy that hurts my children is more important than the care of young people. I ask that you would think seriously about the kids like mine who will miss out on school environment, they will miss out on the services provided by my tax dollars, and they will miss out on their education that is their right. Thank you.
That closes our public comments. Next up is our consent agenda. Acceptance of gifts from Madison Elementary School PTA. Acceptance of gifts from Edison Middle School PTA. Acceptance of gifts from Wheaton-Warnville South High School Tiger Paws. Acceptance of gifts from John, Mr. John Rutledge, Wheaton resident. Appointment of the district representative to the DuPage Area Occupational Education System, Board of Directors for the 2021-2022 school year. Approval of the high school, middle school, and elementary school handbooks for the 2021-2022 school year. Approval of resolution approving travel, meal, and lodging expenses. Approval of annual certification of serious safety hazard bus routes. Approval to add temporary serious safety hazard bus route. Approval of the resolution to amend the Community Unit School District 20403B plan. Approval of foreign travel liability insurance with CLIC. Approval of Surface Pro 7 bundle. Approval to bid summer 2022 capital projects. Approval of the Microsoft Volume Licensing Agreement renewal. Approval of Cisco SmartNet HANS renewal. Approval of the VMware support renewals. Approval of bills and payable and payroll. Approval of minutes July 14, 2021, open and approve, open and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to March 2020 is allowable by law. Approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items Board members want removed from the consent agenda?
I'm Chris. None to remove, but I do have a question about number 11.
We're going to go on to that next. So Dr. Schuler is going to give some comments and then I'll open it up for questions from Board members.
Yeah, only one comment for the Board. So item number 13, the approval to bid summer 2022 capital projects, probably seems early to be on the front end of preparing to bid that work, but consistent with your Sherman Durgis Plan to fund capital improvements, if we're going to get work done next summer, we really do have to get started on that now. I think being able to secure contractors to do work, it's going to be, I think, an incredibly competitive summer next summer. And so the Facilities Committee got an early start on that. Also incorporated in that summer project plan, the Board will note that there are two playground improvements that are identified on there. Consistent with the plan that we shared with the Board earlier in the summer, we did do an analysis of our playgrounds and have identified two buildings that have a need to have an upgraded playground over there, replace playground over the summer. So that is included in the capital work, but is over and above the number that's identified in your policy, the $7.2 million. So that was the only one I wanted to comment on.
Ms. Blatner, would you like to start us off with questions and comments then, since you had one? Ms. Blatner, would you like to start us off with questions and comments then, since you had one?
Sure. Thank you. So for item number 11, I am curious about the foreign travel liability insurance. Are we having foreign travel this coming year? Do we anticipate that? What is that covering, I guess?
Yeah. Dr. O'Keefe, do you want to talk a little bit about the coverage? And then I can talk a little bit about plans.
Certainly. So it's a third-party liability coverage in case any of our staff or students get caught up in a legal situation. It provides local representation and austerity as it comes to working with the school district. So we wouldn't have to necessarily hire one of our local lawyers, fly them over to the country that the staff and students are at to represent them. So this allows us to have representation in that locality where the students and staff are immediately instead of waiting for any type of representation to come here from us on this local end.
Okay, so it's something we typically have every year?
Correct. This was not in place last year because there was no travel last year. But yes, it's my understanding that in the past, this has been a policy we've put in place to ensure that we have access to representation quickly.
Okay, thank you. And so that is my question. Do we anticipate international travel?
Yeah, so front end of the pandemic, at the very beginning of the pandemic, we had a trip at Wheaton North that we canceled at the very first spring break of the pandemic. We have been waiting to reschedule that so that the families that had paid money to travel will have an opportunity to use those funds. Identify two potential options for that trip. One of them would have been later in the school year, one at the very end of the school year, very beginning of next summer. So I do anticipate that there's a chance there may be a trip. If not, if the board does not, just understand we canceled that trip initially for the families at the very front end of the pandemic. And so we've been working very hard to develop some options that would be available for the families. And so there were two travel options plus an option for a family to be able to sell their seat to a different family that would be interested. So I do anticipate that there is a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions and comments regarding the consent agenda?
Just one. Item seven, the travel meal and lodging expenses. And I did ask Jeff this question, but the, it's not a per diem. The lunch and dinner daily limits are pretty low, so I'd like us to revisit that, you know, in the coming months to see what that appropriate level should be. I think it's $10 for lunch and $12 for dinner, which is pretty low if somebody's on the road.
Yeah, I asked the same question to Dr. Schuler. I agree with Mr. Long, and I want to clarify that I believe that includes tax and tip as well. So I think if, for what limited out-of-town travel we might have for our administrators, I think it's worthwhile to take a look at that as well.
Yeah, and it's not just administrators. That travel policy applies to anybody in the district that may be going to a conference or workshop when it's happening.
Are there other questions and comments in regards to consent?
I just want to say regarding the 2022 summer capital projects that I'm excited to see the playground initiative took place and that we are looking to support that in the future with some ones for next summer and then going forward. That I'm glad that that was looked at and that we're moving forward with that.
So I just want to clarify that too. Mrs. Krabchuk and I had the facility committee meeting last Monday, I believe. And so I think we shared it last time at a meeting, the study. And I think it's attached to our agenda, but we're also going to try to develop a district standard in terms of what an elementary school playground is. And because we have a couple elementary schools, one further along than the other, we wanted to engage them and kind of envisioning what that might be and helping use our community partners to develop that standard so that we have a model to go forward on a year-to-year basis to create some parity across the schools.
Are there any other questions or comments in regards to the consent?
I have a few. On point 24, I believe it is the approval of the lease agreement for the transition program?
We're not there yet. That's a separate item?
I'm sorry.
We're going to do that as if that's a separate item now under action. Do you have anything else under consent?
No, ma'am.
Okay, seeing that there are no other questions or comments, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Mrs. Hutchinson, can you call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, so consent agenda passes. Next up is action items. The approval of the Fourth Amendment to the lease agreement for the transition program. Dr. Schuler, any information?
Yeah, so just a little bit of background on the transition program in the building. So transition services we offer, we're required to offer transition services to qualify until they age out at the end of their 22nd, year 22nd birthday. In the district, transition programs provide not only essential life skills training, but job skills training and opportunity. Our current facility is located right on Bridge Street where it does have access to a lot of the amenities and the community opportunities that we seek for our students. That program is built over time. As enrollment has grown within the transition center, we expanded some of our space within the building. There is an opportunity inside of that building for us to lease some additional space that we would be using certainly for custodial maintenance department. We have indoor storage within the district for our equipment, for trucks, for any of the big equipment that we use. We don't have an indoor workshop for our folks to be able to address a lot of the work that they're doing. And so a unique opportunity came up for us to look at some additional space. And so we're recommending a Fourth Amendment to the lease that would provide that opportunity. I think there was a question or comment earlier about potentially impacting the staff. I think there's some assumptions being made about that space that are not accurate. We certainly have looked at some opportunities to best utilize all of that space, both for transition and the services within our facilities department. We do that inside all of our buildings. At any given time, we're looking at effective utilization of the space that we have. And so I think there's some clarity that we can bring with perhaps a couple of staff members that have asked a question, and we will certainly do that.
Are there any questions or comments from board members?
So can we just clarify? So the current transition space that's used for students will not be affected by?
We are not going to take space away from students, right? We may rearrange the use of some space, but we are not going to diminish the opportunity that our students have to learn inside that facility. Did I answer the question or?
Yes, I just?
Okay.
Yes, so the additional space that we are?
The additional lease space is solely for our maintenance facilities. We've had some discussion. We have some members of our facilities team that are actually housed inside of a trailer that's out and back of Monroe. And we've got a long-term interest in being able to move out of that trailer because I think there's some potential design of use of that space. But we're not going to take space away from students. I want to say very clearly. We may reorganize the use of some space in the long term to be able to accommodate both, but we're not going to take space away from kids.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from board members about the transition program lease?
Sure, thanks. Just a quick one on the lease. I think I looked at the lease and I didn't see directly anything that would prohibit in the next three years of the length of the lease, the possibility of adding any outdoor signage or changes to the building that would promote the good work that's going on in there and promote inclusivity. I think everybody in the community would benefit from the work that's being done with the transition program being more celebrated and more prominent in the community. And I think it could be beneficial. I'm just wondering if this lease would maybe not make that possible if we decided that would be helpful within the duration of this lease.
Yeah, I think if we see an opportunity to brand our use of that facility, I will tell you that the landlord has been very, very, very accommodating in working with the district. That certainly is a conversation we can explore with him if we see that opportunity.
Are there any other questions or comments about the lease for the transition? Hearing no other further questions and comments, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the Fourth Amendment to the lease agreement for the transition program as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booton?
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Hutchinson, can you call the roll?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Next up is our oral reports update on the 2021-2022 school opening. Dr. Schuler?
Yep, so our updates, our slides come up on the screen. Here we go. All right, so we're going to give the board and community an update on a few items that have shifted, adjusted, or perhaps been clarified since our last discussion in August. And just a reminder that we did release a document to our community last week that is on our website that does include all of our in-person learning updates around mitigations. That can be found on the front page of our website. Just by way of a reminder, the last time, the list, everything at the top with the check mark next to it down to the part that talks about masks in schools, that's not a change from our last conversation. Those were the same mitigations that we identified at the last meeting. Since the 7/14 board meeting, there is a requirement around masks in schools. We've covered that, certainly talked about that. That is required. I've provided certainly for the board in your green folders just a memo that provides, again, a little bit of that background around masking, not new information, you're well aware of it, certainly from the executive order. So the areas we do want to dive into a little bit tonight is give you an update on contact tracing quarantine. I want to give you an update on our testing protocols for this year. And then we want to give you an update on just vaccination, an optional proof of vaccination that we're collecting. So at the last board meeting, we did not have clear information yet from IDPH and/or ISBE on what the quarantine options would be in the event through contact tracing that we do identify a close contact. We do now. So again, you're going to see two different sides of this chart. Quarantine does not apply or does not impact an individual who's vaccinated as long as an individual who is vaccinated is not symptomatic. There is no quarantine that's identified. If an individual who's vaccinated does become symptomatic, then we would ask that individual, as we do any student, to stay home and we'll follow the IDPH decision tree on when it's appropriate to return to school. On the, for me, it's the left side of this chart. You see the quarantine options that have been identified for an individual who is not vaccinated. IDPH and ISBE identified four options for quarantine. There's the regular 14-day quarantine option that was in play for a lot of last year. There's an option for a 10-day quarantine that can apply only when universal masking is in play and the individual is not symptomatic. So we did, through a lot of last year, move to the 10-day quarantine as an option even for good chunks of last year. IDPH and ISBE identified a seven-day quarantine option that is contingent on a test after day six in the quarantine. And then IDPH and ISBE identified a test-to-stay protocol. We've looked very carefully at those options, but I do want to indicate right now the DuPage County Health Department is not allowing 10-day or the test-to-stay option at this time. So at the start of the year, our two options will be the 10-day quarantine or the 14-day quarantine. DuPage County Health Department has indicated some concern with understanding, especially the test-to-stay option and the parameters that sit under there. They've indicated that they're continuing to work with IDPH to try to get clarity around that. But again, at this time, those are not options that are available to us at the start of the year. When students are in fact in quarantine or in isolation, so the district has developed a plan of support for students if they do in fact have to miss school. That plan of support will involve direct support around current curriculum and learning activities that'll be accessible. Staff that will be devoted to providing direct instructional supports for students. We do want to make sure that if a student is in fact quarantined that they still have the opportunity to maintain that connection to school and remote learning experiences that will maintain that level of classroom learning. So we are hiring specifically a couple of staff members tutors that are going to provide the direct support of quarantined students in addition to classroom teachers. And so I'll remind the board that Danielle Moran, who oversaw all of our Virtual Academy programming last year at the elementary school, continues to oversee any digital learning or virtual learning supports within the district. And she is continuing to shepherd, to oversee our supports for any students that we would be supporting on a temporary basis if they are out of school. She is also continuing to support or develop the plans for any of our home hospital students that are receiving all of their instruction remotely this year. We have a limited number of students that are learning in that format. And again, Mrs. Moran is overseeing that on a K-12 basis. COVID-19 testing. So last year, I just want to remind certainly both board and community that surveillance testing is not new to the district. We engaged last year with a company called Safeguard Surveillance that provided our COVID surveillance testing last year. This year, that service is going to be provided through a company called Shield that is providing that. It is free of charge to the district. We are not charged for any of our surveillance or PCR tests. Difference between Shield and Safeguard is that Shield is a confirmatory test that because the saliva sample is collected on site, it happens under Shield's CLIA certification. And so it does provide not only the same data in terms of surveillance testing, but it provides a confirmatory test for a student or a staff member. So we've brought that in with really an eye on two things that it's going to support. One, as it did last year, it will give us a data set around understanding if we are seeing significant increase in asymptomatic cases within our student population. Two, as we start to look at those quarantine options under the assumption that they do come to play at some point, hopefully early in the school year, if we are able to continue to work to develop that path, Shield would provide that testing option that would support both the test-to-stay protocol and the seven-day quarantine. And again, there is no charge for that. So there, I think it was question or comment tonight about the timing of providing Shield. That truly is an opportunity that school districts really had an opportunity to learn about midway through the summer. And so we did want to make sure, as a lot of districts have, that we fully understood how the Shield process was going to work and the logistics makes sense. And so we've offered it. We did have our initial opt-in window for families. But again, I want to mention that if there are members of the community or parents that are interested in that Shield option, we want to be able to utilize that as broadly as possible. And so we've put an initial window on that. Certainly if there is interest or individuals who have missed it, we'd encourage them to let us know so that- let us know so that we can reevaluate that. Staff, we're given the option of the Shield testing as well. That went out today with an opt-in for staff as well. We will continue to maintain our COVID dashboard as we did last year on our website. One difference this year is that we are going to break out the data on our dashboard by school building. So last year, we had the COVID cases identified by level, elementary, middle, and high school. This year, we're going to actually break out that dashboard to actually track our data and be able to identify what's going on within each of our individual school sites. And so like last year, that dashboard will be updated weekly on Wednesday with the previous week's data. And again, that public dashboard will serve as our weekly, certainly our notification, not required to provide any type of weekly notification, but I think it was helpful last year just in understanding the data and what we're seeing within our schools. So we will continue to do that with the enhancement of breaking it out by school. And then finally, in terms of COVID-19 vaccination status, we are not, we cannot require individuals to give us their vaccination status. But as you saw earlier on that contact tracing chart, it does become impactful when we're talking about contact tracing and quarantine. And so we are giving families and staff the opportunity to share with us their vaccination status that will support just easing us through that contact tracing and quarantine piece. So right now, any families or staff that are submitting a copy of that proof of vaccine, it'll go to our health office because it is part of the health record. It does not go in the school record. Our school nurses will collect that information. And again, it's going to support them in the contact tracing as we work through this year. And again, I mentioned that, that it will be impactful in quarantine. We will continue to partner with the DuPage County Health Department on sharing vaccination opportunities throughout the year locally. DuPage County is largely providing their vaccination support to the community right now through mobile vaccination clinics and opportunities that are going out to various spots through the community, and we will continue to share that information. Really, those were the four update areas that we needed to cover for the board. There really is not additional information that has changed, again, other than the mandatory masking requirement which we've covered and those additional pieces of information around contact tracing quarantine. So questions?
Any questions or comments for Dr. Schuler? Mr. Hanlon?
So I'm frustrated by the disconnect between the state-level guidance and the DuPage County guidance for no vaccine quarantine protocols. Can you share some perspective in our engagement with DuPage County Health Department and our ability to influence, guide, and get the state level and county level closer together?
Yeah, so I guess in terms of process, we have generally either a weekly or every other week, meeting with all superintendents in DuPage County and the county health department where they provide any of those updates and information. The last one was on Monday of this week. That's where they actually provided that information on their feedback on those options that were identified by IDPH and by the State Board of Education. So truly, really, as I mentioned, Rob, right now, I think the issue sits in DuPage County Health Department's understanding of how that process is going to work. And I think some perceived disconnect they see between even IDPH and CDC, guidance around that test-to-stay protocol. So it is not an answer of it will never be available, but they have concern with it right now at this point in time. Dr. Sluggie, you were in on, listening in on that meeting as well, so is there anything else that I've missed in that?
No, that was really it. It's that DuPage County sees a disconnect between IDPH and CDC and does not have clarity on how a test-to-stay protocol would be implemented and does not feel ready to provide clarity on how DuPage County schools should roll out a test-to-stay protocol.
So as I hear the language you're using, and I'm not saying it's intentional, I sense a lack of urgency on their part to get connected at the state level and get clarity so we can have operational clarity on what to do. Because we're entering the school year without specific direction, right? And I'd like to have a little better sense. I can't judge their sense of urgency because I was at the meeting, I'm just assessing that based on words. And so I strongly encourage, we somehow encourage them to get on it, for lack of a better term.
Yep.
Thanks.
We have a meeting with them on Friday, just our district, and a meeting with the executive director of the Health Department, and we'll certainly share that.
Thank you.
And I think it's a little, sorry, contradictory. I think we should point out that ISBE's goal is for all students to be in person. And so by them not agreeing to something that IDPH and ISBE has set forth, it has the potential to end up with kids not being in person, which is our goal. I hope that that's, you know, just being relayed to them because that is our goal and we want to work with them. But we also expect them to work with IDPH and ISBE as well. Thanks.
Other questions or comments?
I have some.
Okay. Mr. Long?
I share the frustration on this DuPage County thing. I mean, as fast as everybody's got on board with the restrictive measures, this is one to Mrs. Blatner's point that would get kids faster in school. And all of a sudden, they can't understand it and they're slowing down. So that's a little, that's pretty frustrating. I did have a question on the quarantine support where it says, "Remote learning experiences will maintain classroom learning." What does that mean specifically?
That means we want students to stay on their learning progression. We don't want to provide them with learning activities that are not directly aligned to what students would be learning in the classroom that day.
Okay, but that'd be kind of independent study with staff support, not virtual learning in the class, or not going to be remote learning in the classroom?
It will not rely predominantly on live streaming.
That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you. You know, on that opt-in piece, so I know if people are interested, they'll contact us, but will we consider, you know, kind of publicizing another opt-in because a lot of people might not even know or, so I think maybe we should consider publicizing that again, maybe after school's in session for a week or two. And then on the vaccination, if no proof of vaccine is provided, the assumption's going to be the student or staff is unvaccinated, correct?
Correct. If they're not providing evidence to avoid the quarantine, then yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Paulson, I see you.
Yeah, I guess just a couple of comments. Appreciate the update on all these little nuances of the plan to keep kids in school. Couple of questions, I guess, somewhat related to some of the public comment tonight. If I'm remembering correctly, the executive order from the governor came back on the afternoon of Wednesday, August 4th. And I believe we, that morning before the executive order, had scheduled a meeting as a board to discuss the developments since our July 14th meeting. That was, if I remember that correctly, August 11th, we were, a week ago tonight, we were going to have a meeting to discuss.
We were. We actually wrote the letter on Tuesday and sent it out at 7:30 Wednesday morning.
So we had scheduled a meeting to do that.
Yes.
And then we later decided to cancel it because the topic of the meeting would have been, was kind of already covered. And there was no, from our July, I think the guidance that came out from the State Board of Education and the Department of Public Health was a few days before our July 14th meeting. And there was no further guidance that came out until the governor's executive order. Is that correct? There's no updates to that guidance?
No, not entirely true. So following your July 14th meeting, then there were updates. CDC issued updated guidance. The American Academy of Pediatrics came out with their information. DuPage County Health Department shared additional information as well as IDPH. So following the meeting on the 14th, there were additional pieces of guidance that came out, kind of spread over the next couple of weeks.
Okay. And can you talk about the actions that Illinois State Board of Education would take for school districts who do not follow the executive order? I know there's been a lot of public media, you know, issues here locally as well as across the state about what actions the State Board of Education are talking, are taking.
Yeah, so I think provided for the board, I gave you an excerpt from the letter that the state superintendent wrote to all school districts. She reminded everybody of really three things, all of which center on the state board's stripping districts of their recognition status. If you're stripped of your recognition status, has potential funding implications tied to that, as well as eliminate your ability to participate in IHSA activities and actually eliminate your ability to issue a state-approved diploma at the end of the year.
So if we're not part of IHSA, our students don't get to participate in sports? Is that correct?
Correct.
I think I just read today that there's 21 school districts in the state of Illinois that have been put on probation already by the Illinois State Board of Education. Okay. Thanks. Just want to confirm my understanding of all those things.
Are there any other questions or comments for Dr. Schuler? Mrs. Booton?
So I want to join my colleagues here in saying that my frustration with DuPage County Health Department is the same. I think the test-to-stay protocol, you know, has been approved by the state and by ISBE. And DuPage County has always been following that for, you know, by and large, accepting that guidance fairly quickly. And it's very frustrating that there is, Mr. Hanlon said that they seem to be, I agree, I have the same perception that they're just kind of moving slow on this and that this is a very critical step to keeping our kids in school. Let's see. For the testing that will be done, what time, and I don't know, maybe this might be different per school, but is there something about like the time of day that will be done? And my question is there is, will kids be pulled out of class?
They will have to be pulled at some point to provide the saliva-based test. Again, because we're going to be doing that testing across all of our schools, the Shield folks will develop a schedule that we'll work with them on. So each building will have a set time, like a set day of the week and time where it's going to happen. But I can't tell you exactly how that schedule's going to work across all of our buildings until those details are finalized between Shield and Dr. Sluggie and the district staff.
Okay. And then if it's open, obviously, to vaccinated and unvaccinated students, okay? And then, so can people opt out of it at any time or once you opt in, are you in it for the year?
We are going to assume that once you've opted in, that you're going to continue unless we have a direct conversation with the family that has withdrawn that participation for whatever reason.
Okay. With the notification, with the notification piece, so I think what you're saying, because I know last year, I think it switched to weekly, I think. I had two kids in two different schools that, you know, a letter was sent out. I think initially...
So two separate things. You're thinking of like the direct letters that were sent from the district? That notification is the dashboard that was on our website. That process didn't change. All year, the dashboard reporting. What we will still do at the elementary level, a classroom notification. So if there is a positive case, we will still do a classroom notification, letter just based on size of the classrooms and kind of that cohorted experience. So that's not going to change. This is just the public reporting of cases that happen every Wednesday.
Okay.
Still going to happen every Wednesday, but just broken out with a little greater level of detail.
Okay. So then same at middle school and high school? If there are, I think it was done on a weekly, but like, you know, a letter came out and said there were three cases this week, you know, whatever. So that will still happen?
That will not. So that will only be reported on the dashboard at the middle and high school.
All right. That's what I was wondering. I think that is about it. I think the only thing, and I wanted to just clarify, just because I have heard some things on and off, that to be considered fully vaccinated, that you need to have two shots and it's post the two weeks of the second shot. So if you've only had one shot, you are still considered technically unvaccinated. Is that correct?
Correct, assuming it's either of the...
The two. Well, yeah, Johnson and Johnson's only available to 18 and up. So yeah, there could be, you know, a few seniors who could get the Johnson and Johnson. But by and large, we're, all of our students are on a two, the two-shot protocol. So I just wanted to clarify that as well. And I think that's it. I just want to thank you and your team for continually putting these plans together. Yeah, I was on the board, I was a board member on the reopening team last year. And I know, just knowing where we started and know we are now where we are now, I just really want to thank you and your team for continually updating us and really kind of grabbing this bull by the horn and keeping our schools going. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Chris, I have two questions to follow up with Susan and then at some point when questions are done, just something I wanted to share. So the COVID testing, the change from collecting at home to collecting at school is due to the difference in test?
Correct. Yeah, because the Shield test is actually a confirmatory test that has to, that collection has to happen on-site, can't happen off-site because of the CLIA certification that's required.
Okay. Makes sense. And then for being deemed vaccinated, are we, at one point in some of the stuff that came from the state, I think it was earlier in the spring, there was some discussion that if you had an antibody-positive test within 90 days, you could be considered in that group. Is that no longer the case?
No, actually, that does still apply. So if you were a COVID-positive test within 90 days, that would impact quarantine status as well.
Okay.
Did you have something else, Mrs. Blatner?
I do have something to say, but if somebody else has questions, I think.
You can continue with your, what you want to say.
It's kind of lengthy. I hope it's okay. I just wanted to, with hearing all of the perspectives that we've heard on the masking, I just kind of wanted to give my own, if that's...
Okay.
Okay. I apologize too for reading. So I just want to start with saying that I echo what I've heard, that, you know, we really would love to bring the community together. And, you know, I think ultimately, as Chris, you said earlier, everyone here really wants the same thing. You know, we all want our children to be in school, to be healthy, to be happy, and to be safe. I have a little bit of a different take on the mask issue, so I just wanted to explain it. It's kind of long. I've heard many times over, people say, "My kids don't mind wearing a mask. My child likes wearing the mask. It's not a big deal." But I really do want, I just want it to be heard that we should ask the question, "Does the harm of wearing the mask outweigh the benefit?" I speak as a parent and as a professional whose education includes the study of neurology, child development, and brain development, and training in early childhood intervention. So before I kind of get to my point, I wanted to read something from a neurology text publication entitled "The Basics of Brain Development." And so I'm quoting, "The mature organization of the neocortex," fancy word for brain, "emerges over a protracted time during the postnatal period, and it requires diverse forms of input. The specific experiences of individuals plays an essential role in establishing the mature organization of the brain. The development of normal brain organization requires input via all of the major sensory systems. When specific aspects of input are lacking, alternative patterns of brain organization can and do emerge. Typical expected postnatal experience is necessary for the emergence of normal patterns of neocortical organization. When that input is lacking, brain areas develop differently, and the specific pattern of development reflects the kinds of input that the organism actually receives. At later ages, the developing person, I'm sorry, the developing nervous system continues to require input to acquire new knowledge and develop functional neural systems. Throughout development, experience plays an essential role in establishing and refining neural organization in ways that allow one to adapt to the contingency..." neural organization in ways that allow one to adapt to the contingencies of the world in which one lives. Two simple ways to alter input are enrichment and deprivation. Both have dramatic effects on the structural and functional organization of the developing And it concludes, "Altered early experience results in fundamental functional and structural reorganization." So that's kind of a fancy and big way of saying, I just want to say in real words, as parents, we are all familiar with developmental milestones. Our child starts off not doing a whole hell of a lot, and they start to roll, they sit, they walk, they say mama, dada, in what we call a typical fashion. In fact, I missed girl, if you were to do nothing but leave your baby on the floor in an open space, he or she would crawl, pull to stand, walk, and run. But if you were to strap your baby into a car seat all day, every day, he or she would not walk, because brain development is dependent on opportunity and input. So like physical and language development, mental health and social development occur in a typical fashion. Development follows a typical timeline and progression. Neural connections are formed and pruned daily and cannot always be made up later, and cannot always be made up later. There are small windows of opportunity. The typical development of social skills, including things like empathy, understanding, collaboration with others, and positive mental health, have been proven to be reliant on facial expressions, namely on seeing facial expressions and mimicking and practicing facial expressions. Research long before COVID has shown this. Facial expression as an input is critical to normal, healthy brain development at critical times during that brain development. I just want this to be heard, because when we say that having children wear masks is no big deal, it actually can be a big deal. And if nothing else, conflict and disagreements aside, I pray that this will be heard. I pray that parents will consider what crucial input is being missed, even if they can't see what those, even if they can't see those neurons that are being formed and pruned and everything going on. The thought of heading into two years of asking our children to wear masks during these critical times of brain development and to hinder normal development and mental health for a virus that is probably less likely to be permanently harmed, harmful for them than the seasonal flu, is not something that I morally and ethically feel is okay. So I just wanted to say that, because I don't know how to stress enough in the work that I do, that there are those critical windows of opportunity, and I don't think we can ignore that. And I'm not suggesting that we take off masks at this point, but I do think it's something we need to keep in mind. I don't think we should be looking at a whole year of keeping kids, young, developing brains, in masks. So, just going to say again, just because we cannot see the neural-brain connections being formed, does not mean that it is not occurring. It does not mean that it is not finite. It does not mean that a window of opportunity is not being missed, that will forever change their lives regardless of whether or not they mind wearing a mask. To me, the harm outweighs the benefit. Our children are paying a price, and we will see the consequences and the fallout in the years to come. It's up to us to protect them. So, here's my question. Having said all of that, we are apparently still legally bound to our governor's mask And since we are bound to that, I just have two things to offer. The first is a question. Can we at some point directly seek out answers from ISBE and IDPH as to what parameters will return us to local control? And if they defer to the governor, then can we reach out directly to him with the same question? And then second, this is more for parents. I have spoken with administration, and I have been assured that this year will look different from last year, and not in a way to make things unsafe. But elementary students will have a mask-free hour, a mask-free hour during lunch and recess, and it will be with safety at the heart of it all. They will have PE outside as long as weather permits, and a scheduled mask break, and additional recess for some grades. I would ask further, Dr. Schuler, that if a child feel that they, like if a child felt that they needed a mask break, that there be some system in place that they could request that, and that there's someone there that can make sure that that happens. Middle school and high school will have PE outside, they will have lunch without masks. Middle school students will have an additional outside mask break. And I guess that's, you know, offer opportunities as we can. And hopefully, I do think that our staff will be creative and hopefully offer some of those opportunities so that, if nothing else, they can see each other's faces. And that's all.
Are there any other board questions or comments? Mr. Long?
So I did have some words that I prepared that I was thinking I was going to share during board reports later. It's primarily related to this issue, so I'm thinking maybe...
If it's related to this issue, I think it should be done now.
So, you know, it's, the whole topic, obviously, you know, I'm still kind of torn on some of it, but I will tell you basically, you know, like I would like my senior to be able to have the choice of a mask or not, because she got vaccinated, and we have a high number vaccinated in the high schools. But I would, and I think she would agree, she'd rather be in school with a mask than in front of the computer in her room all day. So, given that choice, you know, I'm okay with that. But, so, I usually use my index cards with talking points, but I had so much to say, I'm concerned I'd miss something, so I'm going to read this. So I'm going to take the opportunity to say a little more than I usually do during comments. First, I want to acknowledge the tremendous amount of work put in by Dr. Schuler and his whole team, not just all of you sitting on the table, but all the other people supporting it. And, you know, a lot of critical comments of Dr. Schuler tonight, and I want to just state for the record, I 100% support Dr. Schuler and the rest of the team, and I could not be any more proud than I am of my personal affiliation with this district and this board. You know, I feel the frustration of constantly changing guidance, particularly in the past month as the political rhetoric has escalated. I'm disappointed in the lack of transparency and consistency from our government officials, from IDPH to the DuPage County Health Department to our governor. To put out guidance offering local control and set the planning wheels in motion, only to issue a mandate weeks later, is poor timing at best and political posturing at worst. I felt all along, since we made our July decision, that a mandate was going to be issued. The fact that the governor waited until right after the Lollapalooza concert was over to announce his mandates is very disappointing. While I and many others would not have liked it, he should have had the intestinal fortitude to issue the mandate in mid-July, because he very likely already knew he was going to do that. The number of emails we have received since the last board meeting has been large, probably close to 1,000, and there's only a handful that aren't dealing with masks, you know, probably less than 10. But I do appreciate the input. I read every one, and I absolutely support each person's individual right to their opinion. Occasionally, we hear from community members that they're disappointed in the board's lack of response to their emails. Just as a reminder, we as board members are not allowed to reply to your emails. It's not out of complacency, a lack of caring, or that we don't agree with you. As a board, we're a group of seven, not seven individuals, so we cannot individually reply to your emails as part of board policy. This is different than other forms of government, like city councils, state legislators, or federal office holders. And also, as you write your emails, I understand the emotion and strong feelings behind them. But keep in mind, for every strong opinion, there's an equally strong opinion with the exact opposite point of view. Evidence can be found from many sources to support whichever position you want to take, and we weigh much of this in our decision-making. I stand by the decision made at our July 14th board meeting. We are in a county that had a very low COVID rate at the time, and we absolutely followed all of the guidance, allowing us to remove one layer of mitigation at a time, and then to closely monitor the result. The guidance was clear from CDC, IDPH, and ISBE at that point in time, and we followed it. We did not make this decision because we do not care, we made it because we do care. We've received wild accusations. We're doing this for personal or political gain. We're doing this because of the pressure from the vocal minority. We don't care about the students, we should be ashamed of ourselves, and on and on. All of these are outrageous accusations. We were prepared to make a change if the evidence, fact-based evidence, not theories, pointed to an absolute need for masks. The governor's decision to mandate masks in school make that a moot point. Just as those who don't want masks accuse us of being controlled by the unions, those for masks accuse us of being controlled by the vocal anti-mask group. While we love our teachers and we strive for a strong partnership, we make decisions objectively and independently for the greater good of our school community. Likewise, no other groups, including the vocal anti-mask folks, have any control of any of the decisions made by this board. I signed up for this position and realized that criticism is part of it. If it makes people feel better to personally attack us, to tell us how much smarter the students are than we are, that's fine. You can condemn our character and all that, that goes with the territory, and that's okay. I don't take it personally. I've asked several times for the community to be respectful. I'm going to stop asking, because it's not going to happen. But I will ask all to keep in mind that as we make these difficult decisions, many agree and many disagree with whatever decision we make. Our purpose is trying to make the best decisions for the community as a whole. I can only hope as kids return to school next week and new routines are established, that our community will start listening to all sides and show empathy for others in the community. The lack of empathy demonstrated in the last couple of months from many people on both sides of this issue is disappointing, and I know we as a community can do better. And my last sentence is I will close with an inspirational quote from my favorite book. Try to do what is good for others, not just what is good for yourselves. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions or comments from board members? Mrs. Putin?
I just have a few clarifying questions.
Yes.
More than anything. Just real quick, on the contact tracing, I apologize if this is kind of obvious, but the contact tracing is when there's a COVID-positive kids. And then that close contact is determined by who's in proximity with that student?
Correct.
The 10-day quarantine is required only if universal masking is present. So what happens at lunch with the close contact protocol?
If universal masking is required in the building. So there's not a differentiation based on where the contact is inside of the building.
Okay. Then what happened to symptomatic? So if a kid has a cough, do they go to school?
Still follows the decision tree. So decision tree's going to ask for a family to do a self-screening at home. If there is a COVID symptom, to stay home until either an alternative diagnosis is identified or a COVID test is taking place.
The same as...
So we are still asking that if you are symptomatic, again, the symptoms that are on that decision tree, most of them are symptoms we would ask for a family not to send their child to school anyway. If you have a fever, if you are sick, if you, you know, so, but they're clearly identified in the decision tree that's linked into the document that we shared with the community that's on our website. It does show that decision tree process and what is needed for a child to return after they've been symptomatic.
Okay, good. And I think to Angela's point, I said this in the last meeting, and I'll say it again, because I think it's really important, again, not to look at masking fully binary. And one way to, I think, do that is to say masks are, many of us have said, they have some consequences and some benefits. So we can say both. It's both. And I wonder whether face shields could help reduce some of the negative consequences, especially for our younger children who need that physical opportunity to see facial expressions or something like that. So I'm just wondering whether...
Face shield is not allowed as a universal substitute...
It's just not good enough.
...for a face covering. Again, it can be used in an accommodation situation, and there are some very specific circumstances where it can be used on a short-term basis, especially if the instruction that's taking place would require the ability to see mouth information of letters.
Okay. I got a couple more quick ones. In the board policy 4.182, when it talks about the exemptions, it does state for individuals who have trouble breathing, and I just wanted to clarify how trouble breathing is measured.
Yeah, well, so one, that is still in the new guidance, so it's still in the updated guidance that's just come out. One, my assumption is that it's self-reported, but if somebody's having a difficult time breathing, certainly my hope, my expectation is that a teacher's being made aware immediately so that medical attention can be provided to the student. So it is not intended to be just a, "I'm having difficulty breathing, so I'm going to take my mask off for a little bit." I think there was a question earlier, Angela, I think you asked it, which makes a lot of sense, and that's that we need to have, we need to continue to have a process where a student can let a staff member know...
Yeah.
...if they're having difficulty and need a break of some kind. And Dr. Slag, you can probably speak to that, because I am guessing those processes were in place last year and probably are brought back, but feel free to comment on that.
Yeah, at the beginning of the year, even when we rolled out some of the lessons on our mitigation protocols, it was really around having conversations with kids around their comfort level, letting their teacher know, you know, if they needed a break or not. And what I'll say is, I think it is a great point to make that very clear again at the beginning of this year. But I'll, in the same breath, I also believe that our teachers are aware of that, and also will plan mask breaks within the day as well. But I think it's a great point to reiterate that with our kids, to know that there's an open dialogue, right? That focuses really clearly on, if you're uncomfortable and you need a break, we'll find a way. And even on the coldest of days, we were getting our kids to the door and doing those things to make sure that they got their mask on.
And as we do around any number of circumstances, we certainly encourage parents to have dialogue with their children's teachers. If there's a specific concern they have or a piece of information that the teacher needs to be aware of to help support child and family member, those conversations happen all the time in our classroom, not just around COVID issues. I think there was a comment earlier that spoke to any number of reasons why we have medical plans that are in place for students, or individualized 504, individualized plans for students. So I would encourage if a parent has an individual concern, reach out to the classroom teacher to make that information known and aware so that we can certainly support families.
Okay. So I think my question is just clarifying for the community that if, because I think the parent conversation might have shifted a little bit since last year, so I'm just concerned that if that is being provided to students as a rationale for not wearing masks, that could complicate the enforcement?
Certainly could.
Okay, so we just want to...
But that's not just a carte blanche, you know, take your mask off. I think if a student is having a difficulty, they're going to, they're going to need to reach out to the teacher.
Okay. Just, I think, one last one. I think it was brought up before, but remote learning experiences will maintain classroom learning. I think we should, because of all the work we're doing with accelerated learning, because we recognize some learning losses, I think we should try to be honest that it might not. It just won't probably compare, and maybe just, I don't know, recognize that or show the community what kinds of new strategies we might try, recognizing that it's just incredibly difficult to maintain that standard in the remote learning experience. I'd be curious to see what's going to happen in that quarantine period, so.
Yep.
I think that's it.
Is there anyone else before I ask a question and comment?
So I just wanted to ask again, like, can we seek out that information from ISBE and IDPH about, you know, what protocols or what parameters will return us to looking at local data to make decisions? Or was that discussed maybe in the ISBE meeting today?
I can tell you that it is reg, I don't know if it was discussed specifically at the ISBE board meeting today, but I think that that information is a regular point of conversation on the local level. I would just ask for any member of the board, if there is specific information that you're looking for, please give me those questions, or get Chris those questions, so that we can aggregate that and seek clarity on any information that you're looking for.
Okay.
So just give me the questions you're specifically looking for clarity around, and we will certainly pursue understanding where that information can be found.
Okay. Because I mean, I would appreciate us trying to get the answers from them as to what will return that local control. Like what metrics do we need to meet to get, you know, to be able to look at those mitigations? look at those mitigations, you know, and be able to reduce them as our numbers look better? Like, is that, how do we make sure, how do we ensure? Basically, my question, how do we ensure that we are not headed into a school year that the entire year, these young kids are going to be in masks? That's, I mean, so I'm very wanting to know what is that parameter that is going to get back to where we were on July 14th? Okay, thanks.
I just have one clarifying question and then one comment. So the clarifying question is in regards to the testing. So I know it was Mrs. Booton and I spent most Wednesday mornings helping out preparing kits. So is this a time-consuming piece on our part or are they doing it this time?
They do all of it.
They're doing all of it, okay. And then I know several board members have mentioned, you know, questions and comments and concerns with DuPage County Health Department. Dr. Schuler did mention there is going to be a meeting with just us with DuPage County Health Department. I will be representing us on that meeting. If there are any questions or comments that you would like me to pass along as well, board members, please share that with me. Okay. Onto our discussion item, which is the Vision 2022 Update and Board Priorities for the 2122 school year. Dr. Schuler, any information before?
So this is a carryover from the last meeting. And just want to mention, we brought to the board, I think, some draft priorities for this year. I'm just going to ask each of the members of our senior leadership team to do a really quick recap of kind of their department priorities so that you have it for a little bit of context. And then obviously, if there is specific question or feedback from the board, we can entertain it. So we'll start with the order that they are in your booklet, and first would be Student Services.
Thanks, Dr. Schuler, members of the Board of Education. Certainly, you can see our goal areas and priority areas in the Student Services or SEL department, and most of those align with our current SEL framework. Just a few pieces that I want to highlight to you without reading the entire list of our goals and our focus areas that are going to be big focus this year. Certainly, the school connectedness piece is going to be significant for us, ensuring that 100% of our students are connected to a trusted adult in our school. Well, that's a lofty goal, that is always our goal, and we're going to be very strategic about that. Going as in-depth, including that in our school improvement planning at all of our levels. Additionally, this is our second year for Emotional Wellness Coordinators at the high school level and our first year for our middle school Emotional Wellness Coordinators. So certainly, the work that they'll do on the more intensive end to help our students, while the relationships and school connectedness is our first layer of defense, kind of our backend defense is the work that our Emotional Wellness Coordinators do. So their preventative programming and their reactive programming will be significant for us. And then a goal that is really conducive of our entire senior leadership team, our entire organization, is finalizing our District 200 Portrait of a Graduate. Given a few updates on that, we're looking forward to some input sessions and bringing that home and letting that also lead our strategic planning efforts. So certainly, other areas that you can see listed out there. As we go through, obviously, or at the end, I'm happy to take questions, but I wanted to make sure I highlighted some of those big pieces.
That's great. Melissa, you want to move on to Ed Services?
Yes, good evening. I'd like to draw the board's attention on the Ed Services Work Plan to the middle portion of that slide, that's the gray portion. You're really going to see that we have two broad areas in the Ed Services Department that will be a focus for us this year. First bold area there is FIT in our Learning Acceleration work, and specifically focusing on two areas of our FIT learning environment that are Standards Mastery and Differentiation. And when I say this, it's a really, it's a refocus and reimagining and also going deeper with a very specific lens on learning acceleration and best practices in that area. You're also going to see under Curriculum and Program Development, that's second major area, multiple subject areas that are going to be a focus. We're very excited that we're able to return to many of the work projects that had been put on pause during the year of disruption that we had. And then at the bottom of the slide, you're going to see each of those specific work areas laid out in the developmental stage that they're at and where they fall within implementation.
Dr. Kyle, want to talk a little bit about Administrative Services?
Yeah, absolutely. We were just actually yesterday, we had over 150 of our new teachers and 50 of last year's new teachers come to Wheaton Warrenville South High School. And we did an hour and a half Alice training. Do you remember, new members of the school board? We started Alice training three years ago. We were ready to implement 100%, and COVID came. So we're back to being able to implement Alice. We look to, in the first 90 days, we're going to implement a law enforcement drill. We have lesson plans at elementary, middle, and high school at appropriate levels to make sure our kids are safe. A lot of the conversation tonight's about COVID, but there's also school safety as well. So we're working on that and HR as well. One of the things we're looking at right now is we've got some companies that are going to get us, like, video screeners where we ask questions of candidates, and they will go on video and answer the questions for like a screening process. So we continue to look for different ways to expand our hiring and expand our diversity in hiring. So those are two of the things we're going to focus on. With Safety Committee talking about a pivot, once we get through Alice, to talk about some digital citizenship at all three levels. Because we've seen some things that now that all the kids have one-to-one Google Chromebooks, we do understand that there's been some things that we can help our students with on what it is to be a digital citizen and what things to do and not to do when you have a Chromebook like that. So those are the things that we're really pushing in Administrative Services and Human Resources.
Jason, you want to talk a little bit about the Department of Innovation and Technology?
Yeah, just a brief reminder that this department is a little bit unique this year. We do, or we will be running on two parallel tracks. One track focusing on the hardware side of technology and another track focused on the innovation instructional side that technology might play in there. So I'll take the hardware side first. The major focus that we're going to focus on this year really incorporates network updates, particularly how we're going to keep our information and data secure, both for our students and staff. So this year, at the beginning of the school year, we are implementing a series of six cybersecurity measures to ensure that we're keeping data safe. The other big, big piece is a unique law that not many states have, but it's called SOPA. So this is a law specific in Illinois saying that we, as a district, are aware of the data that any tool might be collecting on our students, and if it is collecting data on our students, that it's doing so responsibly. So all of these tools are being vetted, and it will be public knowledge for anyone in the community to look up what tools we're using and what data is being collected by these tools. As far as the innovation side goes, really, the role that this department plays is really supporting and partnering with all of the other departments that sit at this level. So Digital Citizenship with Dr. Kyle, Portrait of a Graduate with Dr. Sloggy, and the FIT Learning Environment with Ms. Murphy. In your green folders, you'll notice that there is a diagram or visual of really how all of the work that's been mentioned by other departments comes together, right? It's all important work. But innovation is kind of that last step of how we make that work actionable at the classroom level, right? We've also begun work on defining what exactly innovation is. The definition that we're using is that innovation is you're trying something new or improving on something that you've already done. So this visual is meant just to show the relationship of everything that we're doing in the district, how it's all connected, and how we can actually make some of that work actionable for teachers. And that's pretty much a summary of what we're doing in Department of Innovation and Technology.
Thanks, Jason. And Brian, you want to talk a little bit about business?
Yes, sir, thank you. So focus main areas are finance and facilities. It's a continuation of where the focus has been for the last number of years. We've begun that, the facility side tonight, by asking for your permission to go out and bid on summer projects for next year. Next in line for when we're back together in just three weeks is our final budget for the fiscal year of 2022. We'll ask you in January for the permission to begin working on our fiscal year '23 budget and at the same time, bring you an update on our five-year planning model and where our projections are for the next five-year period of time. That will include some capital project thoughts and discussions for the summer of '23 and '24. And then if there's a moment for it and it's the right time, we'll begin discussing, I anticipate at the beginning of a discussion this year, surrounding funding opportunities for capital projects looking beyond just the next few years.
Thank you. So again, just a reminder to the board. So we started this discussion around goal plans for this year with really a heavy focus on development of Portrait of a Graduate. And your next strategic plan, so a lot of those pieces are referenced within here. But I'll stop there and answer any questions or hear any thoughts that you might have specifically around the plans for the year.
Would like to begin?
Oh, sir. So for the SEL department, with the expanded clubs and activities, what are we doing to make sure that students know about this and really hit it home? And I think I've mentioned this before, that, you know, I have an incoming sophomore this year and, you know, last year freshman year introduction to high school and everything, that a lot of those opportunities, I think, were missed because we were just trying to get our kids educated. And it's certainly not just for sophomores, but I just want to really, I know we put a lot of thought and time into making this happen at our different levels, and I want to make sure that we really, you know, kind of really make sure the students are very, very engaged in this and are very well-informed, repeatedly informed about the opportunities that they have at the school. So I'm just curious what that looks like to the students.
Yep, great question. I think Mrs. Booton takes a lot of different forms. But what I will tell you, in that committee that made the recommendation to expand the clubs, that was at the heart of our conversation, of making sure that there's access and availability and simply being known, right? So one, promoting through signage, announcements, sponsors. Also, though, some of our clubs are actually student-generated as well. So depending on the level of students, how that promotion looks varies, right? So what I can tell you from an overarching perspective is that our administrators very clearly are committed to making sure that promoting the clubs and making sure people know what's available is out there, right? And something we'll continue to do. Is there one specific pathway that we're taking on that? No, I think it's a variety of pieces, so.
And just one piece, just from the high school standpoint. We have clubs and activities where we're exposing all the kids at the high school next week. When we start like, hey, here are the clubs, this is what we have, get involved. We're not running activity buses next week because we're trying to promote our clubs and the new clubs. And like Dr. Sloggy said, we have had people running clubs for free for many years. So we've got clubs that are coming, but we also want to balance it with what kids want as well. So next week at the high school, they are going to have, it's like the week where you expose the kids to all the clubs, the activities, the sports, all the things they can do.
And I guess will that be ongoing, though? That it'll, because I just want to make sure that as, you know, additions come up for different things or, you know, the plays and show choir and all that kind of stuff, that kids don't miss it, you know, because there's always, there's a lot of information that comes down. And so I just want to really hammer that home that as a way of engaging and connecting with our students, that they're really aware, I mean, obviously not like shoving it down their throats every day, but, you know, that they get it multiple times. This, for Educational Services, and I apologize, I could just have, I just may not remember this, but I think, and please tell me if you're wrong, last year we were supposed to implement a new math program at the middle school, and I believe that got delayed. Is that correct? And is that moving forward now this year or is that different? Because I just saw the bullet in here for research and development, six through eight math. So I'm just kind of curious where that, where that is.
Ms. Murphy, go ahead and answer that if you want.
Absolutely, correct. We put that on pause due to the disruptions of the last year. And we also now have the addition of math coaches at the middle school level that are going to be able to support and go back and look at the programs that are out there and have a planning year to prepare for that pilot and hopefully be able to bring a recommendation to the board further down the line.
So the recommendation that we had for the 2019, or no, it would have been last year, that has changed, where you're kind of.
We want to take the opportunity to go back and look at all of those programs once again that are out there and before we go to pilot.
Okay, okay. And then.
Especially because some time has passed.
Right, right, yeah. I just wasn't sure where that was in relation to these bullets. And then I think a big piece that was missed last year for obvious reasons was group work and collaboration opportunities in all the various classes. And I'm just wondering, is there, I don't know if I want to say emphasis, but is there, you know, like a goal to kind of really bring that back? You know, really try to find opportunities to bring that back into our classrooms and provide those, more of those opportunities this year for our students because a lot of that was lost last year? Does that make sense? I know that we will try to do it, but just is there a little bit more maybe emphasis on that to try to provide those opportunities?
Yeah, so again, I think with the focus being on the kind of the high-leverage impact strategy for kids, not necessarily just group work for the purpose of doing.
Oh, yeah, that's what I mean, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's what I mean.
Group work, but yeah, that will continue to be an emphasis. I will tell you, just naturally with, I think, some of the spacing opportunities within the classroom, it is going to bring some of the opportunities, some of the desks that you purchased at a meeting this summer that actually kind of interlock in a little different way, but actually still provide appropriate distancing yet in kind of connected tables, I think are going to bring some different opportunities this year while still adhering to our distancing expectations.
Dr. Schuler, can I add to that as well? I'll also note that on the work plan, specifically focusing on differentiation and collaboration is a high-leverage strategy in differentiation. And a part of our EC12 administrative meeting last week called specifically collaboration out in that differentiation space for the materials that we provided our administrative team.
All right, perfect, thank you. In Administrative Services, I just wanted to ask that we include substitute pay in that, you know, as far as goals, we've already discussed that in this last meeting or two meetings ago, so I won't go into all the details there. But, you know, I know that we still have some work to do in bringing our substitute pay in line with our comparative districts. So I just don't want that to fall off the radar. And as far as, I know there's here with the video screening hiring tool and what may think of that is that we continue to target diverse hires in our, as we look to hire into all of our positions across our schools. And I remember mentioning this maybe a year, year and a half ago, too, that as part of that process, too, working with our municipalities in creating, in, you know, communities where a diverse staff want to live and have their families. And I think that's, it's, that's an important piece that we, I know we have very good relationships with our municipalities, and I think that's a place where we can try to work together in accomplishing that goal. I think that is about it. I think the only, there's more of a comment in the Business Services that. I think the only, there's more of a comment in the business services that the review of potential funding opportunities for capital projects, projects that we know in a little bit longer term, but not the too long term anymore, that we have, we're going to have some needs, you know, especially at our middle schools that are not part of the Sherman Durges formula, that are still crucial and important pieces of our infrastructure for our schools. And, you know, I just think that's something that I think several of us who sit on this board have known, who have worked on past referents, that it takes, it takes years to have this conversation with our, with, not just our community, any community, about what the needs are, you know, that are potentially coming down the road. And so I just want to be, as we look at that, to be as transparent as possible about what, what needs are coming down the road and how we can potentially start them. So I think that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you for all the work that's been done this past year under these incredible circumstances. And again, just thank you, Dr. Schuler, and to all of the staff. I really greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments in regarding to the goal work plans? Mr. Paulson?
Go first. Okay. So my, my comments are really focused on the board priorities part of this. You know, I've been involved, I've been on the board now for eight years. And this has really evolved quite a bit from our original vision, 2018 plan and then the 22 plan. And so I look at, I like at this and I always have to kind of digest each individual page because there's a lot of information on here. And I'm trying to kind of separate the, kind of the day-to-day things that we're working on versus the true long-term vision items. And so that's, my comments are going to be really structured around the long-term vision items. And I think, I think the Portrait of a Graduate is absolutely essential in everything that we're doing because that's going to be the, the lead up to the development of the next strategic vision. And that strategic vision is going to really dictate what we do over the next four or five years. So, so I think those two things are really the core of it. What I try to do is try to narrow down the 32 bullet points into a few things, one to two things per group that I think, I feel is the most critical and certainly in student services, Portrait of a Graduate. We need to finish that process because that informs so much. That would then lead to the, I'll come back to that in a moment. So student services, Portrait of a Graduate, and then also social, emotional learning and emotional wellness. We know how critical that's going to be this year. I would, I could argue that that's a day-to-day thing that we do every year, but I think it's so essential this year. We all know it's so essential this year that it needs to be one of our priorities for this, this current school year. So those are two things under student services. Under educational services, I really want to focus on career pathways and fit. I think the career pathways are something that this board was really excited about. That we even actually got an email from a community member about that recently. And then fit, you know, fit is the future of an instruction in technology. And we've had fit since I got on the board. And so I think we need to think about what the next evolution of that is because I don't think the future's, future, I think, I think it's now. And so certainly the, the development of the Portrait of a Graduate will, will inform what the next evolution of fit is. And I think that's, I love the fact that we now have the Department of Innovation and Technology, not just the Department of Technology. So I really like the idea of defining what innovation looks like in District 200, how that informs the next level of fit. I think those two things are going to be essential. At the administrative services standpoint, I think school safety analysis, we need to get back into that. That's going to, now that we have all the kids in school, that was one of our priorities a couple of years ago. Needs to get back at the top of the list here in terms of what our board priorities are. And then, and then really just the continuous professional development and hiring reflected in our equity work plan. We know how important that is for our staff and for our students. So I think that's going to be absolutely essential. And then finally, for the business services, trying to tie all this stuff together, and we've kind of talked about this, but I really love to develop a five-year look ahead that really truly integrates the financial component of it, the learning component of it that is going to be reflected in fit as well as a portrait of a graduate, and then how that impacts our facilities. I think those three components will set the stage for what we do for the next five years and even beyond that. So again, 32 bullet points on here, a lot of it's day-to-day. I'm looking at it from the standpoint of what the board priorities are. And so for me, those one or two items per group is what, excuse me, what I'd like to focus on.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Mr. Hanlon, did you, where are you up next?
Yeah, I want to focus on the Department of Innovation and Technology. And one of the priority areas is improved cybersecurity measures. And so when I see in the goals, you know, the two, the technology aspects of it, two factor and remote login, I'd like to see a little bit more governance in that, and they probably exist. Maybe it's more of a report out at some point so we have better visibility. But I'd like to understand more about our penetration testing approach and our vulnerability assessment. I'd like to understand what we do for training for employees on cybersecurity education. And lastly, I'd like to know more about our crisis response plan and if we've exercised it. I know those are very tactical things, but when I think about cybersecurity, I think also think about the governance in addition to the technology. And so I wrap those up in governance. So I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Questions or comments?
I have one question. Did you?
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
I want to reiterate what Brad said, being SEL, being very critical this year, but look a little bit more to the, the day-to-day thing. And I'm, I've kind of tried to formulate a question. Does each of our buildings have a plan in place to address the social and emotional issues that have resulted from COVID? Or like from this past year, I should say, from everything that is. Like is there, what does that look like, I guess, day-to-day?
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it's, it's a layered approach, right? So our plan sits in layers, right? At its most basic layer is making sure a child has a trusted adult. But that may not be the only thing a child needs, right? So certainly there are tiers and layers of ensuring that we're meeting social, emotional needs. And some of them are very specific to an individual student and some of them are more broad. So the first layer, though, is what I referenced in the relationship piece, but there's all the other areas of our framework that come into play, whether COVID was in play or not. But since it is in play, we're even that much more hyper vigilant about it, right? Even to the point of integrating it into our school improvement plan. So I guess the, the short of that answer would be yes, yes, we do. And we are certainly aware of it. And the first step in monitoring that is getting our kids connected to school, right? But certainly all of our buildings are also aware of students that have, may have more intensive needs already as they come back, right? Because there may have been warning signs or issues from previous years or from what happened last year, right? So in different layers, from our classroom teacher to our interventionist, to our social workers, there certainly is a system at every school.
Okay. Thank you. So there's a way to identify some of the issues that may not be readily, readily.
Yep. Two, two pieces around that. Yeah, we, we do have referral forums. So I mean, that would be the most intensive side of it, right? If, if, so through, if a classroom teacher's identifying some of those pieces, we do have a referral process, yes?
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Yabba?
Sure. Thanks. First of all, I just, I want to say that this is a really exciting document. It's one of my favorites to look at and ask questions about. I think it's incredibly important to have some vision. It gets us away sometimes from, from the difficult day-to-day challenges. That being said, I'm curious, just a couple of questions, probably mostly directed to Chris, about the, the, the way this document reads over time. I think Brad mentioned 2018 and then we have 2019, 2022. With this document, which is the equity update, I think from February 24th. So in this document, there's some very, very explicit goals and a vision, actually. It's more than anything, it's a vision for how our district is going to accomplish what we claim right over there, which is that all, all students will have a positive experience. So what I'm wondering is, to what extent, some of these, some of these really bold claims, addressing microaggressions, implicit bias, changing and discontinuing practices to counteract racism and discrimination's contemporary and historical impact, claims about making brave spaces and courageous conversations. All of these are, these are very research-based and decent claims in order to accomplish our goal, but they're less explicit here. So I'm wondering, to what extent could, would this document interact with this document or be integrated or mapped onto this in ways that some of it was actually lost over the years? So achievement gaps were named last year, but they didn't come up again this year and things like that. So I'm wondering how these, how these documents interact and whether naming some of these more specific goals that are there and we're doing them, but they, this document wouldn't necessarily read with our equity commitments in place.
Yeah, so, let me just make sure I understand. You're asking of the interplay between the equity plan and the set of strategies you see here.
Yes.
Right? So the equity plan came to be because the board specifically asked for us to identify an equity plan, like separate plan of action, which we did, right? So I, I guess I would say, I think what you're asking for would just be a slightly different approach in the integration of two documents that wasn't what the board previously asked for. So that's why they're, they're separated out. This is really department-specific, a pretty tactical kind of visionary approach by, by department or work area. And again, the, the areas that we identified in terms of needing to address some of the, the gaps that we were seeing within the, the school system, the equity strategy across departments. So it was really developed as kind of its own plan of action at the request of the board.
That one was. Okay, one more question on that. These, is there, is there a reason, so if something was present and went away, like community engagement as its own page that's no longer here?
We, and the only reason for that is we did a separate community update for the board, or did a separate update for the board specifically on community engagement at your last meeting. So we, we just did not call that out specifically.
That's all. Thank you.
Is there anybody else before I go?
I just have a general question. I mean, there's a lot of good work in here, but the Vision 22, 22, I don't remember if it's four-year or five-year plan. But are we in the?
The four.
Four years. So are we in the last year or the second to last year?
Last year. Our thought process is that that new strategic plan is developed by the end of this school year.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
So what's, what's the next step in terms of the refinement of this document or, you know, all the discussions we had heard tonight? What, what's the next step for the board?
Yeah, I think fair question.
That's a big question, I know.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I have the, the immediate answer. I think we, we can reflect on some of the feedback and I think the priorities that you've, you've, you've kind of focused us in on and try to perhaps actually simplify document here a little bit. I think this reflects kind of the, the totality of work, both strategic and operational within each of our departments. And, and I, and I think what I heard from the board is have a little refined focus on the strategic areas you helped us to identify with a little bit of operational support or detail that sits behind that. And that's typically what's happened. We've usually had this first discussion and then refined have your specific goal target areas and brought that back to the board in September, which has usually been that timeframe.
Okay. Yeah, just a quick question or comment on how we got to these strategic goals. So just a little reference, Dr. Schuler joined District 200 in the September of 2014. Quickly took in all the information that we had gathered from Engage 200, which was the prior year. Developed, the board approved the next four-year vision, which is 2018. Then we went through a process to update that through Vision 2022. And now as we conclude that, we'll develop what one would think would be called, maybe it won't be, but Vision 2026, the next strategic vision for the next four years. So that's a little bit of a, a quick history of how this document developed.
And one thing I'll add to, I think, your last question, too, is typically when the, the goal of plans have been refined, then we've also become clear on how your board committees will, will shepherd and oversee a lot of this, the detail work at the committee level and kind of deciding ultimately what needs to come back to the full board for review and discussion.
So I just have three things that I'd like to chime in on. I also agree about that five-year plan to be able to look at our financial, our facilities, look at all of that. Let's, let's get something, you know, very, a little more detailed out there to the public so we're, we're thinking that next whole five years. Also, middle schools, you know, definitely within that is, is a priority to look at that because that was, as we've been really working at, you know, putting in about seven and a half million dollars a year for our other operational things, we're, we're ticking off quite a bit off the list. But those middle schools are, are much more significant and would like to definitely be looking at that. I'm very excited about the digital citizenship that Dr. Kyle was talking about. In addition to kids understanding how to express themselves in an online venue, we really need to look at where kids have been. Dr. Schuler and I are going to be presenting at the State School Board Association this year. Professionally, I do a lot of that as well. Where our kids have been and what is out there and exposing them right now, whether it's drug dealers that are, are using Snapchat as a way to get at kids and predators. And, and so there's just so much out there that, and I'm really glad that we are starting that all the way down at the elementary level to be able to do that. I do have a committee topic. It's been something I've brought up before. I think this is the perfect opportunity to be looking at again is final examinations, especially after this year, looking at not only the purpose of final examinations, but looking at the schedule that we have and the amount of time that we take for that final examination schedule. Is there a better way that we can be using the opportunity for, for learning time instead of that, that final schedule as well? So I would like the, and I know we've made great progress in, in, in final examinations and looking at purpose and meaning, but I'd like that to continue. And then also looking at that process of that week that we use each semester. Okay. All right. Lot of great work. Next up is our written reports that are on there is the monthly financial report, the Foyer report, and the board communication report, which I believe was 32 pages this time and we hit a record, we hit a record high. Reports from other board members, board committee reports. There was a facility committee report was attached. Is there any other information, Mr. Paulson, that you would like to share with that?
No, we, we pretty much covered it throughout this meeting.
Are there any other reports from board members that they would like to share at this time? Okay. Topics for future discussion is the 2021, 2022 budget. Our next regular meeting is September 8th, 2021, here at Hubble at 7:00 PM. Announcements, we have a September 22nd, 2021 Committee of the Whole, again, here at 7:00 PM at Hubble. We do have two public comments on non-agenda items. I've already stated the guidelines before. The guidelines will continue for these as well. The first person up for public comment is Derek Crenshaw.
Good evening. I'm a Glimmer, a teacher and a Wheaton taxpayer. I'm going to talk about equity. Equity is all about equal outcomes, not equal opportunity. And that's what you guys should be focusing on, equal opportunity. I'm going to tell you what's coming your way because I came out of CPS and I went to Bolinbrook and now we moved to Wheaton for better schools. If you adopt equity, all you're going to do is lower standards to get equal outcomes. It's culture, not race, that inhibits intellectual development. It's not about the race. Quick history, equity comes from CRT, but we use all these different names. It was theorized by Derek Bell, college professor. He developed his ideas from Herbert Marcuse, who was a German Marxist. who was a German Marxist who escaped Germany right before World War II. This is where this stuff's coming from, folks. Obviously, you know where he got his theories from, Marx and Engels. Basically CRT, what Derek Bell did was substitute the Marxist terminology, bourgeoisie, capitalist, with white oppressors and the proletariat workers with black oppressed. Derek Bell and his minion are nothing but race pimps. They're stealing your tax money, folks. I'm here, I didn't get paid to come over here. These people stealing hundreds of thousands of dollars of your tax money to lower standards. Virginia's talking about dropping math, advanced math classes, advanced STEM classes, all in the name of equity. Okay? This is not a right or left thing. Eighty percent of the teachers rejected the lowering of standards at my school. They want to give 50% for zero work. Most of the teachers said, we're not for that. We are dropping academic consequences for cheating in the name of equity. We are dropping standards, which is going to hurt your district. I've seen it happen. Equity is not going to improve your math and reading proficiency rates for any of these kids. Okay? Go to Proviso West and ask the teacher how it's improving educational levels for the kids, giving them 50% for doing nothing. Think about your football team. That coach and all your state titles, they don't practice equity. They give all the kids an equal opportunity. That's what you guys should be doing. Math and reading, give the kids an equal opportunity. Do not adopt equity. I'm telling you, they're just ripping you off. And the last thing about, I'm just a real quick example about the false data you've been using. You're taking this data, you're taking all these black kids and putting their test scores together, white kids, Chinese kids, whatever, or Asian kids, whatever. Just because someone looks like each other doesn't mean they're the same. You have suburban black kids that have been born and raised out here in Wheaton and went through your grade schools. Most of those kids are probably doing very fine. Then you have kids coming from the East, and their grades are really low.
Thank you, sir.
And you're putting those test scores together, and you're creating a problem that you don't have. Don't accept the fact...
Thank you, sir.
Don't accept that the kids from the East, those test scores are your fault when they can come out of your district.
Next up is Pam Anderson.
I came up here with the speech that I was going to read to you and decided I got a little bit off track on that. It's been refreshing to hear some comments here, but something that you opened with tonight was truly disturbing. You said your primary goal as a school board is the safety of our kids. That is not your primary goal, it's education. Safety of my child is my primary goal. Don't take that away and assume that's your responsibility. You're here to educate them. And think about what he just said about some of these things that you're considering doing. That is not good education. Do your job.
Okay. Let's see, there being no further action to come before the board, an open session. I ask for a motion in a second.
Chris, sorry. I wanted to just make sure that we add for future topic of discussion.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me.
That for our next meeting, that there will be time to review our COVID metrics and mitigations and how, where we stand, how we're doing, and where things are.
Thank you. There being no further action to come before the board, an open session. I ask for a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
So that was Mr. Hanlon, and who was second? I'm sorry. Mrs. Booten, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our meeting is adjourned.